For five o'clock. Everyone has a new order of departments that we discussed. John, you're going to start us off before we begin. Bill, did you want to share your thoughts on what we discussed yesterday?
My opinion on the work.
I think a lot of opinions.
You know why everybody has one too.
As far as the expenditures and...
Yeah, I'll...
And I ask that because if Council feels that's a good way to go and it's certainly a special checks.
Yeah, I went through, when I went through the budget, I tried to identify what appeared to be one-time charges. Things, major expenses that we weren't, wouldn't typically, you know, we're not going to see here each year. So therefore, we wouldn't be relying on a recurring revenue to address that expense. And I'll just quickly go down. I identified what I think are 12 of them. One was the, we talked about Tuesday night, was the truck for the development coordinator. The transmission and rear end work for one of the pieces of equipment on the street department. The plow for the red truck. The library building repairs and walks and street repairs. There's also a chunk in there under library books which are supplemented by grants. And then under Mueller Center, building repairs, equipment repairs, sidewalk repairs, and tables, bench, and a flat screen for this room, and security cameras. When I pulled those numbers out of the spreadsheet, that comes up, what appears, at least in my mind, to be one-time, non-recurring expenses, comes up to be $185,100. That contributes to the $207,000 or $214,000 overrun that we're looking at. Since it's not, these are not recurring expenses, they're the repairs, you might say, building maintenance. Well, that is recurring. Well, to me, if you're going to clean the carpet every year, that's a recurring expense. A major roof repair or whatever, I don't believe that is. So it would seem reasonable that since we do have, I think we added to unassigned fund balance last year, would it be appropriate to take these expenditures from unassigned fund balance and not try to either eliminate them or continue to whack away at the budget to try to get into a structurally balanced budget to match revenues? Know that, well, anyway, that's a thought. Is that what you wanted me to do?
Yes. I think you identified some other items in the front and over the back of what's the right way to do that. An hourly purchase or at least so much long for sure. These are things that come up every year and kick it down the road. Would it be better if an hourly purchase or a fund that you take care of?
Yeah.
See what the council's feeling was on it. I'm doing it best for that way. That's why I asked, had a conversation first because it would be back to the margins and John, what gets us there.
Anyone else have any opinion on that?
I'm open minded to that. You got to point it out, put all of what you have on your list.
I can show you my idea. I know, I noticed everybody was taking notes, but... So with those expenditures that you're talking about versus what our balance looks like at $207,000, $214,000, you're looking at a $22,000, $25,000 difference from the budget over time. You can add cutting versus the one-offs. If we pull the one-offs out, then instead of looking at a $211,680 overage, we're down to, now I'm going to have to do math in my head, about...
I will give you the...
About $25,000, $26,000.
Yeah, so then we're looking for a lot less without a deal of recurring expenses.
I have a question as well. The monies that we got last year for the COVID expenditures, and we ended up coming up like a million dollars ahead.
$300,000 and something, $320,000 as well we put in unassigned fund balance that we were planning.
But wasn't our budget or our balance like a million over what it was the year before?
Your balance on what?
Overall, our overall balance.
In the general fund, they think we put a little over $300,000 in unassigned fund balance. I brought the audit right here.
So is that money up for use for these one-time plans?
That's up to you to decide. One thing I would say, if you haven't been putting money aside for the road improvement project in the last few years, and that's what you've been saying is wanting to do that, you can only spend more dollar more time.
But that's up to you to decide. It is one-time expenditures, is what?
Yeah, I didn't catch them all, and there's a lot of one-offs every year. They never really significantly go down, so.
But I just know we had extra money last year.
The reason I brought some of these up is, I think this is my fourth set of budget hearings, and some of these have, we look at each budget cycle. So it's worth, to me, it's worth the discussion for the council.
Now, you were saying $100,000, much more than we came up with. You got $70,000, almost $79,000 just in the library, just three things.
It's $185,000 and change.
And so you're thinking that if we went and put those as a one-time cost and we pulled that, that eliminates from our budget per se off overcharge accounts, off that $214,000.
Correct. Yeah.
So how do we look at it when, during the seat, during the, during our year, if per se we blew another transmission, just per se? How, how are we going to look at that? Where does that put us? What actually in a position to do a major repair or something? Well, I mean, where's our money? What is our reserve? How do we get this one $185,000?
I provide you financial reports normally. Do you see those, what your balances are?
As we stand over right now?
I, I, you'd probably be fine. Is that what you want here? If you needed to replace something next year and you didn't plan a budget for it, and it exceeded the contingency, which is your built-in emergency money, which you'll determine what amount you want to use for that, she probably wouldn't go that way off.
So what is our contingency done as a state?
For next year for this budget? Well, at the last meeting on Tuesday, you settled on $75,000. If it's not done, you, all that's still being discussed, so.
One thing that jumps to mind in the last two years is the Mueller Center's problems. He said it needs to be taken care of, it needs to be taken care of. And then we can have this year, the air conditioning and the heating system in Bellator. We need that taken care of, and then that took away from the...
The work that we budgeted for.
So it's those types of things that I identified. It's a road reconstruction project that Misty had talked about. We don't know until the minutes come in what's going to happen with suspended sidewalk and the facilities themselves. I fully expect that the monies for suspended sidewalk are probably going to go up. We've seen expenses go up ever. And the state is cautious when it comes to metal. Those costs are more than, we already talked to you about the additional expenses for the treehouse. And bridges on that. Now, I expect those costs are going to go up also. Council will have the decision to make depending on if they want, whether you want to move or increase costs. There is a potential increase in those kinds of costs. But I agree on the service, which is trying to address it. What follow those things that we keep saying we need to do and we don't fuck, has to try to balance this.
Do we do that every year?
Yeah, every year, the repairs.
It grows.
Kind of get more expensive, get more expensive.
It may just might take on all this in the actual budget.
And I don't necessarily have a job for financing. A lot of yours, yeah. Our campus online and on the board of supervisors that keep these departments hammered down and make sure they don't overspend in the year assessment. But I don't like to always, and it's just personal, like streets department, you know, we hammered and hammered and hammered and took away from those guys. When are we going to ever make them whole? You know, we need to think about what we need to do to get the departments home, to make them being able to do the jobs that we need them to do. Along with that, good equipment, good machinery, whatever it is, we're going to re-teen our people. Because you're not going to keep somebody around that is not going, is, is going to have to operate these machinery and not have the funding or the supplies to be able to do what we request for them to do every year. And for me, gosh, we're not broke. This city is nothing. So we need to figure out a way that we can make these folks home, do what needs to be done right for them. Instead of constantly hammering at them, taking away, discouraging, and we need to let them do their jobs. With our help, we can go. There's so many.
I just want to clarify, we hammered and hammered and took point to point. We bought an asphalt slipper, we bought a street cleaner. We are fulfilling their requests, and I wouldn't say they're hammered on any more than any other department has tried to reconcile. I'm in agreement with what Bill is saying, just for the record, about one-time and one-off expenses. What, once he identified, I didn't cash or coin enough, and this is the first I've heard, so I'm not sure I can totally agree with the combination of them. But I hear what he's saying, and he's absolutely right. Last year, we used cash blood to balance our budget. So that's something we've never done before. But you have to be careful doing that and caution you, and those of you that have attended budget training workshops, you've heard that same cautionary tale. You have it, you can spend it. But we are facing some pretty significant expenses that we know are going to be a lot higher than we planned for. And so I also want to caution you as you're making those decisions to not dip too greatly into that bucket because you're going to need it. And our sales tax is doing great this year, title's doing great this year, but we know from last year with the anomaly that having, we can't really count on those things. And road construction will impact our sales tax collection. That's another part that you're going to have to think about. So I agree with what Bill's saying, as you go and look. I don't necessarily agree with hammering on the street department and putting them down and knocking them off. We purchased a lot of things they'd asked for, and we've supplemented budgets with contingencies every time something's broken down. So, you know, we do the best we can, but every department suffers from those kind of. Do you really need that? What can we do to get by, not just the...
Can I add something real quick about the DOT? Our last conversation with the DOT, we got the shock with the lighting. Rick Zocker made it clear that yes, the DOT understood prices were higher. He said, if the prices go over, the DOT will not save the city financially. They will help us by any way. He made that clear. But not, probably not give me money, but there will be an option that we can make affordable for the city and not say just, they've done it for other cities, this is the biggest project they have planned for this year. They know it's going to be a big project. He gave us other avenues where we could see some cost savings if it came down to it. We'll make that decision probably mid-October, once the number's full.
See, for me, we've got that big project on the way. We've got a big project up at the school, which we got a grant. We have to pay a financial...
And for the utilities portion?
Yeah. We've got, in front of the plunge, we want to put concrete. We don't have the money for all those right in front. We've got to cut and stuff, and if we want to do that, and everybody agrees, the front of the plunge is dangerous because of the trucks. I don't know, I, I, I like what Bill's saying, but, you know, once we go through the budget, there's a lot more in there that might get cut. But I don't know.
I'm going to go Craig on this, front of that plunge, that road. I drive that every morning and walk across, it's not safe. Sidewalks start having to be repaired once for somebody, something happened. The big trucks that come through there, they had to go around me, go on the other side of the road. Parking is terrible there. I mean, something got to be running right there to make it safe.
So that's three big projects that start next year.
We have to pay for it.
I don't think, like, maybe it will happen in 2020, too. I think it depends on the project.
I think a portion of that will be taken care of by the state on that project. They take...
They have that small little corners that can, if we 2023, we'll already get to that corner.
But I think that's part of that road, I think, is stopping.
It was over like 10, 20 feet.
30 feet and safe.
I agree, it's safe.
We use cash pride last, I'd say to get to the habit of it, for one-time expenses, but it's the same year and the time, all these other big things coming up to dipping into that bucket.
At all, or too far?
Too far.
All the things, what is too far?
Well, we'll have to go through each of these, figure out what we're comfortable with, and balance that.
$211,000.
And we have so many things on these notes that are in the notes, but not the budget that...
Primarily, primarily, we have $75,000, just what we're talking about in the library costs. We're talking $78,000.
We ready to start?
For all.
All right.
I'm open minded on it. Can you look at them a little more, final? Yeah, I'm ready.
So John gave us a nice schedule of events, and we're going to start with the Mueller Center. We're going to bounce around a little bit, John, and I'll give you the page numbers on your worksheet tab in front of you. Page 24 is the Mueller Center. And then I'll go through these dollar amounts and then the notes. Just like we were doing when we ended Tuesday night, just stop. There's questions, I don't have any interruptions. In salaries and wages, we have $49,300 calculated to say what we did for all the departments we reviewed on Tuesday night. What's not calculated in this estimate, the facility director requesting raised $18 per hour. The OASI, FICA, the retirement, the workers' comp, and the unemployment are all calculated based off the dollar linked amounts, so all the adjusted changes to it. Group insurance is our low mark for cross-subschooling, same ones from last time. You did well notice that it went down, family coverage was dropped by an employee that received a 50% benefit. SDPAA, this facility or department was significantly impacted by the evaluation that we talked about on Tuesday night. Professional services and B's include things like more chemical, true green, EcoLab, Alstom, and spot wranglers for their perfect timing, $5,000. Publishing, $2,000, that includes advertising, the South Motor Magazine, Facebook, Evergreen Media. They advertise for weddings. Rentals is $300. We have notes, scissor lift is needed for changing mics, that's about $89,000 per day. We have highlighted building repairs of $40,000 to inspect and edges. Theater roof, $4,000, steel roofing west side, front, $25,000. Gym floor, strip and seal, $5,000. Black ceiling tiles in the theater, $6,000. Stop and when I discuss that, I think John has to bell, so John might have to go.
Yeah, on the roof, we took out the theater roof and the gym roof for this year. We've done the inspection this year. Made some minor repairs up there to get pretty safely through the winter without leaks. We look, we're going to do the same thing again in the spring. Those big ticket items for those roofs, though, that's going to be a big chunk of money. We want to save that for 2023, once everything's done with this geothermal system. No, we're not going to be leaking with the roof we got, but it will have to replace within two years. But getting those, that front roof out there looking decent without the big paint falling off of it has been, has been a point of contention for a while. There's nothing wrong with the metal, it's just, you have to have paint, of course, and everything.
You just strip it, you have to leave it, those have to be around?
Be stripped, it'd be bare metal, it'd probably start to rust.
That's the 20 ride, right?
Yeah.
And then the gym floor, strip and seal, and the black ceiling tiles in the theater?
Yeah.
I'm surprised I'm talking about those, those are high priority.
Stripped and on the floor?
You know, the, the gym floor, the minimal maintenance that we've been able to do ourselves over the past few years, it's, it's really starting to not fail, but it, it's getting to a point where it has to be done. I had brought it up a couple of years ago, and we had put it off for a few years. The strip, it would take, it would almost bring the tiles back to what they were when they started. They would be a blank, and they would get several coats of wax on it, and it would extend the life of the tiles. I'm guessing another four to five years. If we were on a regular maintenance schedule with a company like that, we could get probably another six or seven of them. Unfortunately, when they redid the floor, oh, in the mid-'90s, when they, when they fixed a water break with an HVAC issue then, it just, some of the tiles, I mean, buildings settle, things happen. We're getting some separation in the tiles. A lot of the tiles that are around the outside of the gym are starting to fail and come up, and that would be in the processes that I would replace some of those tiles before they sealed and recoded it. I did bring up, I think it was two years ago, Misty and Kim and I talked about doing a stained concrete floor. I would still like to have that on the wish list for the future, but we're looking at upwards of $30,000 to $40,000 to have it pulled, skimcoated, and painted. The gym, or the, the ceiling tiles in the theater, it just, it's time. I mean, they, we fixed a lot of the leaks that are in the theater, so we don't have an issue with them, but a lot of them, I mean, they're just, they're stained, they, they just look pretty bad. I've done, my wife and I go to a lot of venues and a lot of other places like this, and I've, I've kept my eye open on a lot of them, and a lot of them I see black. And black is just, it's a very nice look, gives it that open ceiling look, and I think it, it's just time. If you're all agree.
And we're using up all of our $70,000 for this year, that's left, right? I mean, we have stuff planned for that. Now that this is stuff we can do with the money we have budgeted this year?
Could probably get the ceiling tiles this year.
We might be able to. I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep it as minimal as I can. We did, thankfully, we were able to get the skylight replaced this year. I just, this HVAC issue is, every time I turn a corner, it kicks me in a different direction. I'm really beyond my point of frustration, but it's, the facility is 40 years old, things fail, and I'm hoping that we can come in way under that number. Doing everything I can.
Please fail them.
Yeah, well, now we have a, the, they ran all the HVAC lines underneath the concrete when they built the facility, all the water lines. And in the '90s, when they had a break in the gym, they ran the gym units, the water lines, outside so we could get to them easy. Well, they didn't do that over on the north side of the facility. And right now, the water line that goes to the conference room unit, I'm hoping that it's just the condensation pump wore out for the HVAC, but I think that the building is settled, and the pipe has come apart underneath the concrete because I'm getting water through the wall. So I shut it down, and I'm hoping that it dries up, and it will be a simple fix, but it just, this past year is proof value-wise, unfortunately.
That's your white stains over on the roof?
So I answered your question, Misty, we can afford $6,000, either pull the gym floor or pull the theater and fix your budget now. Issue, I don't think we supplement, if we supplement it, a lot of the cost, if we were paid to be able to, and a few couples.
Even if I were to, at the end of the year, if I was able to just preorder all of the ceiling tiles, install them somewhere so they would come out of this year, we could certainly drive it around.
Between the building repairs and maintenance, and equipment repairs and maintenance, you spent about $30,000 here to date out of $75,000, so maybe one or both of those.
Sorry.
I'm looking at gym numbers right here.
So 11, take out the gym floor, strip and seal, the black ceiling tile, and try to get them done this year? Chris, is that possible with the banks and things that you have to, is it reasonably possible to get the gym floor done this year?
If, so I have the schedule, the girls come in beginning of November again. If I were to get with a few companies now and get on their schedule, I could probably have it done by then.
So if I had to set $11,000, I'm going to leave those notes in there. If I remember, then I bring that one down. Anybody else have any questions or conversations about that? So equipment repairs, then I, equipment repairs is the next line, we have $8,000. Continue with HVAC repairs, bond springs, service, and LED fixtures in office. Anything on that?
More hopeful that the HVAC repairs is more just a service call, so we have them coming this spring and fall. With the LED lights, the LED lights everywhere else, that's kind of the last one remaining.
Nobody? Okay, next one, street lock repairs, $26,500. Some of the notes include replacing a portion of the concrete at rear, $6,000. Asphalt patches and crack seal and black coat front lock, $18,000. Restreck front lock, $2.5,000. Restriping front lot, 25,000.
Are we talking strip and seal and proper?
Yeah, actually getting a quote on that, thanks, please.
What portion of the concrete at rear?
Where the patio is at? I've actually accepted a bid with LaBarre Construction. It's, every year it gets worse with, I tried, did some, after speaking with Craig and Les a few years ago, I diverted one of the drains back there, but it just, the cracks are there and it had gotten under there so much that we're going to do about 80% of it here in the fall and then the rest of it will just be left over.
Oh, so that's work you're gonna do this year, so we don't need the budget for it in 2022?
No, there will be more to do. I only have, I only have so much budgeted this year and it, there's more that needs to be done.
So you do have evidence of settling on the building, you just, not having?
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. And I've started to see some of the seams and the walls and the dividing walls starting to crack, the mortar joints.
So 6,200 percent estimate for next year?
Yes. Well, it, that's in with the chip ceiling. I think we can do it for, I'm hoping around three to finish, three or four?
I'm sorry, this isn't working very good. We have the chip crack seal and black coat at 18,000 in addition to the six. And then restriping to?
You know, after, after taking the quote out or working with some of the contractors, granted, LaBarre usually comes in a little bit cheaper than some of the other people, but I'm doing about 40 square feet with the 5,000 this year and there will be about 30 square feet left for next year.
So are we good to leave that one and move on?
If you had to pull something from that, from the negotiations, if we put off that front parking lot again, do it the next year, it's gonna be like 25,000, just plain like up there. Now, if you were going there?
It is, it is.
I agree. So we're leaving and nobody's asked to take it off, right?
I wouldn't leave it, because if you go and you, if you go and you figure out, you're just here, you're, you're replacing pretty much two thirds of that whole place.
I will say that I did have money last year in my budget to crack seal up front, but when the HVAC issue happened, I mean, we were just hemorrhaging money left and right. And I, I saved what was from that, just to go back into the budget, try and save a little bit of money.
All right, so I moved on, I didn't take anything out of that, everybody okay? That supplies, 800. Sometimes I don't think you ask for enough for supplies, Chris. Is that enough? In 2020, you spent 1,100.
You know, and I, and I think maybe that would be better, a conversation for you and I to sit down and have a clear idea of what comes out of that budget and what doesn't. Because I, sometimes I feel like I, I don't think things will come.
Description and you can, whatever you really want.
Okay, well, I just, I put things in and Karen says, do you think it'd be better here and it's?
Yeah, you do budget more janitorial supplies and that's why, I don't, between the two, where you decide to put it up. I just want to make sure you have enough. So you think 800 is enough?
I think so, I think so.
With your janitorial supplies, we have 4,000. Minor tools, 1,300, that's another one, or sometimes I'm not sure you ask for enough. You're at 78% here today.
And?
Have to use a lot of stuff around here.
I do, but I just, I try to keep it under, I, there are a lot of things that I've updated in the past, like I do lighter saws and things like that, that I have that will last me for quite some time. I'm trying to be as frugal as I can.
Agricultural supplies, adding food grass seed and some light irrigation supplies, 200. Gas oil and diesel, that's mostly for sellers, 150. There is a note, but nothing budgeted for a new electronic event sign for the building. Just, I guess that's a reminder note that 2023, that's something I will get to do.
Yeah.
Utilities for the Mueller Center are paid from the 211 fund, remember, Tuesday, we went through each fund and but it's established more that 20% left over, most of the utilities for the Mueller Center. So that includes their telephone, their internet, their electricity. We build water, sewer, just like we do in the other departments where the cost is offset by a transfer in from the budget who's receiving the payment. An improvement other than buildings, we have 3,000. That includes tables, concrete bench, overtime capsule at another time table at the front of the building and a 70-inch flat screen TV for the manics to replace the detectors.
You haven't used any of that from this budget? You know, 1,500, you have a year to date, you haven't spent it.
I don't have it in front of me, I can't, I don't know what I have budgeted for this year.
And I think I have some notes from last year, but I'm not sure if I can access our shares, but I have to find it. She did have something specific that was for. I don't, I don't have one there.
You can Facebook and get your tables and chairs this year.
I could, I could.
I didn't see chairs on there.
Tables.
Tables.
Somebody wants new chairs. A storage container?
That's what it was.
For the whole storage container thing?
Yep, that is.
That's what, that's what I was saying.
It's, for the most part, right now, it's completely fallen apart.
Oh.
What about your oven?
Anything else on it?
You got enough money for it?
This year, you can do that 1,500.
Well, right now, it's time to do it.
Yeah. What, you remember what she came in at? That oven was like 4,500, wasn't it?
Yeah, right at 6,000.
You might be able to get one cheaper now. Worth looking at.
Certainly look into it.
Okay.
Absolutely. The, the, the concrete bench, if we need to cut, if we need to cut somewhere, I'm not opposed to putting that off for a year. I'm looking at 12 to 1500. Where the time capsule is, is where the wooden bench sits out at the front of the facility. There's a square concrete pad. Yeah, so years ago, when they built the facility, the, my understanding, what I've been told, is that the bell that's down at the fire hall, that was supposed to go here with a large brick piece that it would sit on. And there is a time capsule underneath there. I have just put benches over it the past few years, just to make it look nice. It's, that bench needs to go, I mean, it's just, it's gray and rotten. And if I have to take it out and it's a concrete square for a year, it'll be okay.
Have a big piece of sandstone to fill it up.
Fair enough.
Or I don't think the bench, I mean, see anybody inject it to the bench? 1,500, is that what you said, Chris?
12 or 15. I would really like to keep the 70 inch if we could, that, I've looked at Target, Best Buy and some places. I can, I can get a large TV, they've come down so much in price for 500 to 600 dollars.
And then how much would you need for tables?
15. I get a?
Not only do you have 15, 800.
So what are you getting, spending 15 this year for?
I can get tables, I can get updated tables. You know, I had a discussion with John and about the airport, when they do, I mean, the airports are doing more and more flyingings every year. And the guys come down and they get tables and chairs from you to take them out there. I mean, every time they travel, they get beat up. And I would be more than happy to give a section of little tables to the airports, so they have some. So they just have their own and they would stay nice.
So if you buy tables this year for 1,500, you will need 15 next year, you need more tables next year too?
I, I could probably get by without them next year. Some of my banquet, some of my banquet tables are coming up on.
That is, we have six on here, was the estimate you gave me or John when we were doing this. Do you want to take that to eight?
For the TV?
Yeah, that's what he's gonna pay for it.
If anything, seven.
Oh, the 15 that is not there? That's including? That's including the hanger and everything?
I can get a hanger for between 30 to?
About 40, 40 dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I can get them down to ace for a pretty minimal cost.
Okay, so I changed it to 1,500 and I'm taking out the tables. Well, I'll just leave those notes in there, what you do with it, the TVs in there, what you do with it. You have enough and you do the concrete bench.
Okay.
Now, now the TV is for, maybe is it actually be, it gonna be for us to use when we're having meetings here? Or is that something that is being requested from you for meetings?
Other.
Outside?
Both, both. I, I made the decision this year to take one of the smaller TVs off of the wall in the lobby and hang it on the wall in the conference room. And it's been, it's just been a huge benefit. I've had, especially the chamber and even some smaller groups that instead of having to hook up a projector, they have that HDMI.
This particular one, and we're having trouble?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we used it for our elections, built a TV in there, it was small, this one will be bigger.
Yes, yeah, I'm thinking 70 inch, because they can hook their HDMI right to it, into the laptop, and it's right there on the wall.
Why isn't it all that cost being council is what be, in my mind, the primary reason? Why doesn't the whole cost have to come out and lose?
For the TV, it's 800 dollars. He said it was 800 dollars. It's not a big cost, this is a fine tech floor, it's located at this facility, users will be anyone.
Honestly, Dave, there will be, there will be quite a few people that use it, other than yourselves.
I've seen advertising people coming here, put their presentation, they'll maybe use it as well.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a, it'll be a fairly, say, inexpensive.
They were talking like 300 dollars, 500 dollars on different things, split the cost with City Hall.
It's all general fund.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, we're gonna be pitching things and this pitch things all the way across the board.
Same thing, so I can put it here or there, so I think this, it'll be.
That's fine, I, I would just try and in my mind, to make sure if this is being done for council or if it's being done for use on the whole facility.
Bill has started using the torious, saving the meetings. And it's, when we were in the middle of COVID, we decided to have our many meetings down here at the Mueller Center. We stretch out a little more than we can in the conference room. And it's really benefited City Hall not having these meetings down there with the public coming through. Sorry. We need to continue to have this meeting, an executive session. We could take a bag of it and we could use our silver ballot. If you're calling it from the phone, you can call in. If you'd like to call in, Ashley Johnson.
Good with everything?
This is, this baby's studying 21st century.
So we need, bring those chairs out of that, out here for us to sit in.
I already, I already had Doro go grab ten, so when you take a break, you guys can have pushy chairs.
Really?
Yeah. I think that honestly, for you guys, if that's something we want to, you can take out of a council budget, chairs are about 120 dollars, 130 dollars apiece. If we want to buy some better chairs that are dedicated just to council, we can certainly do it.
Especially for you.
Machinery, so I changed that to 1,500, it's staying in Mueller Center and DBF and TVs. Machinery and equipment is 1,300. He has a goal for Black Hills Technology, which is our IT folks for one indoor and two outdoor security cameras. I question if this will require a cell phone to monitor, because we just approved a new cell phone for an employee for that very recently. So, great idea to have security cameras, this is as much for it. If we're going to require them to have a cell phone to monitor those security cameras, maybe go back and add some cell phone expenses to this budget.
So, to save you some money, I use my cell phone for it and I don't have an issue with it.
So if you use your personal cell phone for city use, we just talked about everyone who does that getting the 25 dollar reimbursement. So again, if it's gonna require a cell phone to monitor, you can decide that tomorrow later, but then we'd have to put either the reimbursement or the cost of city provided cell phone in this budget.
I think we come out with 200.
If it's for him, and he's a Mueller Center employee, I don't think that's utilities at the Mueller Center. Was it 25 per month? It'd get, so 300 dollars a year.
Yeah, honestly, I, that is, it's so easy for me to have that app, to be able to pull up and look at the cameras. And for people to call me on, I don't need my own city cell phone. It's not that big.
We can talk about that, or probably outside of budget, but I won't leave them, I'll put it in there, but that's something to consider. So, everybody okay with the 1,300 for the cameras? All right, convert it, you don't do it?
The conversation we need to have outside of here is that if we allow you to use your own cell phone, we would appreciate for it. Then if we need to, for some reason, you know, look at your text messages or your email, because they may be like, something's going on with the city, that we have to recognize that.
Sure, absolutely.
So your expectation of progress would be?
Different?
But he can't refuse to reimburse it, he doesn't want that, correct?
If, maybe if it's required.
Oh, and then he provides, and then we have to struggle to fund, which he doesn't want to do. I don't believe him, he's a call. So it's either or. That's kind of needed.
Continue that discussion. So we're done with Mueller Center? No, oh, I didn't, our total now at the bottom, so we made some changes, it's 157, 670. So we're, well, we're, we went down. Because we were at 170, 170, now we're at 157, 670. Misty, just for the sake of asking, if we did the wage increase, what would it do to that line? Um, I, I'd have to pull up his current wage, I'd have to add that. It would make an adjustment to it. Chris, I don't know if you're comfortable announcing what you're at right now.
1698.
So we already have projected estimate for next year of a step increase, and a 30 cent quota. So what he makes plus those two things, then figure out the different times at by 2080 and that's the difference.
We're anxious to move on from here, I'm glad we should pass about the wage increase. You're gonna see a number of these others that are individual wage increase requests from the partners. And you need to consider that budget time, you're probably right, you know, mild departments can improve requests, but a number of years ago, we started chasing our tails doing exactly this. Employee identified, if they weren't making enough with their pay raise, or we felt like we might be losing employees because they weren't making enough. We recognize that if we continue doing that throughout the year, that's what we're gonna be doing. If employee A asks for a pay raise and they get it, employee B is gonna say, well, heck, if they ask for it and they got it, why shouldn't I ask for it? And that's the reason that we decided to go ahead and hire the Western group, put all of the job descriptions and give us a sense of what the salary should be. Just recognize that if you do this, our other employees, we've been writing the say, all I know, all I have to do is ask for a pay raise and budget time, I don't know.
So has the Western group come up with their answer yet, or are we waiting for that?
Well, we did it in 2019.
December, November, December, 2019 is when we got the report from them. And 99.5% of all of our points fell within our range. We didn't take all of their advice, but the goal. We didn't take all of their advice, but the goal of that setting is make sure we're paying people appropriately, ninety nine point five percent of their work.
I do know in the past that when I was in the council, I do know that we just have problems with the police department not making it much as the county, we just want it to the county. So if the city raised it, it was higher than the county. And then the county raises overs, the city did it again. It's not fair to all the employees. And I agree with Bob, you know, that's something that is a sad thing. If, if we give one person a raise, I think everybody out here, every city employee.
Do you have a process for two raises for employees every year, regardless of performance or?
Look back, great Bob, you know, it isn't fair like Caitlin gets a dollar more than I do. That ain't fair.
She asked.
I should get a dollar too.
So I, I, I see what Bob's coming to. I'm not, you know, arguing against, yeah, figuring out what is the right amount to pay. But I caution this, this is how we do it.
We did pay for that study too, so we should make attention to it. What we do, what, what we've talked about in the office is we need to consider how often we need to do that. And now that we've established this relationship with the Western Group and they understand, it might not be as difficult or as lengthy next time. So is that three years, is that five years? How often is that? We can't count on that wage study at the end of twenty nineteen in twenty twenty five. But that, that's a discussion for another time, but we have discussed that.
I'm not sure if they're in line with twenty twenty two. That's the other question I'm going to take it from. At this point, we all recognize that employees part time workers are making the same, is it no work for them? Starting wage of fifty million dollars or whatever else it may be. So even having the Western Group do it, are they now looking at not only the skills that justify a particular hourly wage, but the market itself and how that contributes to the starting salary, or what your skill set should be? Important questions. To understand, that's a question we could put out, because we hardly recognize that. Are they simply looking at the skill sets and say nothing should be independent of what the current market needs to be higher than?
Well, this is the last time they did the market study. That was a big piece of the study that they did, is they looked at the markets around us, including like three or four states I can remember of ones that that was.
So the answer is what was requested, nothing ever spoken to them. Are you not worried? Raising the thirty dollars, not decided.
I just, I just wanted to bring it up. I've been around the Miller Center a lot this year, I've seen Chris up, up hand and watching what he does here. He does the whole thing on this Carl. And I'm surprised what he made. I thought it would be way more than that, for as long as he's been.
And it's my understanding that he's working on a particular job description that may not include all of the duties that he's performing for us. So it's an upgrade in the job description, job duties. But if we run that into another situation, I'm going to submit that to the Western Group and see what they have to say. If he's performing the duties of employees to be two individuals, then it's fair to say that job description needs to be reevaluated and reassessed.
I have no problem with this.
Again, I caution you that if you're just looking at it that way and you're not basing it against a larger standard and how everybody else assesses, you're going to hold yourself up for other employees saying, well, I don't.
That's what I think, I think if we give one employee a raise, we give, right, spread across board for employees in the ass.
But you are doing the quota, so you can draw a different amount, you can plug in different numbers.
I think that's all these figures.
I think special positions can require special raises, not just across the board because there's.
Same position, you think special, I played.
Well.
What do you mean for function?
People that have, you know, a higher degree of responsibilities and, and say like Chris, who takes on an entire facility, single handedly, per se. You know, there's, it's just one of those, you need to assess each thing or each position. The Evans Plunge lifeguards, they aren't just sitting there. They have a special skill set and life-saving requirements that they have to keep updated, you know, and maybe those people need a little more wage because of their skill sets rather, you know. So it's just those things that you look at separately because of their special need, their special requirements for that job.
The, I think, David, it sounded politicianally, I think the answer is probably somewhere in between is using something like the Western Group as a guideline helps us because we do not have an HR department to do all of this.
I agree, I agree with that.
However, are we giving the, have, you know, COVID changed, COVID and post-COVID changed the job market. And so.
September, we're going to see another shift.
The question I think we need to ask them is have you factored that into your results that you give back to us? And then also, and we worked real hard when we did this the first time, that are the job descriptions that were handed them accurate? Going over job descriptions is about as much fun as getting beat up in the mud.
And we get each department head the opportunity to review and change their job descriptions. And I'll.
And I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not making any allegations, but I'm not sure we've put the effort into it. I know they probably look at it, but are we, are they accurate? Or I don't think so. So we need to, if there are, if there's special things like Chris is, has some unique things with his job. He's a, he's a, an individual performer, he does duh, 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 duh. So if those, those types of things need to be listed within the job description. So when we hand it to Western, they can say, okay, this is, hopefully they can say, okay, this is different and it might yield a higher result. And I say all of that to say then, maybe not now, but at some point in the future, we relook and say, do we need to take another look at salaries? And whether that requires a supplemental appropriation or whatever, or we're just smarter going into twenty twenty three. But we've got a good tool, but it's a tool that's sharpened to the point that it's really what we need for this day and age and the circumstances.
Well, that would kind of break it.
Yeah, yes.
Being, being new to the group, when you all went and hired the Western Group, was there a position audit done for each and every position? As to what their actual duties were?
Each department head was responsible for that with the help of the city administrators. So they all got their job descriptions to review, which are in place to review and edit as they saw fit. And those were the ones that we used. And yes, we did go through each and everyone and all the people under them. So if I were at Plunge and I had the lifeguard and the slide dispatch and the guest service associates, they also went through each one of those.
It was, it was no small effort.
It was extensive. And we didn't, they want us to cap out. They want you to reach a cap. They wanted us to stretch out our staffs over ten years instead of five. They wanted us to do away with quota. We're very heavy in our benefits, we found out. So most employers, if you're comparing yourself to somebody else and one day they go off the benefits, we do. So the total cost of employing people was also looked at. And I can't remember what they said the industry average was for the compensation benefit. But we were like ten percent higher in benefit than the standard average. But we're, we're trying to have a point here. It has been an hour, you know, we're not going to get too much today. I'd like to continue this conversation about what's the right thing. If we all agree that something similar to what Bill is saying, something in between is the right thing. I don't think we're going to get it all tonight. But I'll take your guidance here.
I agree, this is the wage thing needs to be done separately from the current budget. I think it's a bigger discussion. We got to get to the budget next.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, libraries on page twenty three. Please don't hesitate to interrupt me if you have a question, but I'll do it the same way. So in the library salaries and wages, they have one twenty six two. That includes a part-time librarian clerk at five hundred and fifty hours, a custodian at three hundred and twenty hours. The custodian is also added in professional services. One or the other should go, we're not sure, John might have an update that they, they have been working on which way they're going to go and have not made up their mind yet. So for now, we have it both places. The payroll taxes, retirement, workers' compensation, group insurance for the employees, unemployment, SDPAA. They are another of the facilities with a new way to break down the cost of the insurance. They saw an increase. Professional services is twenty four thousand five hundred. That includes G and R controls, that's an annual maintenance service on their age back. Carpet cleaning, Black Hills technology, imagine library technology heavy, night security, need and feed service and custodial services. So they have nine hundred and six hundred for custodial services, which is what they had in place prior to having employee from the city doing it. The facility that did the work was Black Hills Special Services and they stopped doing it with COVID. So John, have they gotten any estimates or decided which direction they're looking and going?
They're not bringing back, bringing in social services.
She is giving quotes from others, I think we have that number right now. She's going to still be using Carl, so we'll only meet somebody three days, four days a week rather. Every day we need Carl.
And so I would just add that when you add all those professional services up and we may cut it down a little, but that totals sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy five, but we have twenty four thousand five hundred requested.
But we haven't seen there at one time.
Okay, so I can add those up and subtract that amount and that's the new amount that we go in there.
And that's not cutting anything, that's just a recalculation because we moved that other thing to another area. Correct.
So the custodial service is forty five, forty eight hundred?
Stick with that number for now, hopefully.
So that's fifteen two seventy five. Anybody got any problem with raising that to fifteen five around here?
So if, back those questions, so just take that back over. Is the salary part going to go down because Carl will be working part time?
It sounds like the plan is to continue, and I prefer to leave employees out when we can. But especially for him about performance.
He said.
I know, I know. It sounds like the plan is to have him continue on the base he can and bring them back in a smaller scale. That sounds right though?
Yeah.
So for professional services?
Fifteen five is what we're putting in there? Publishing, they publish their work minutes. Unfortunately, I published a few more job openings this past year than previous years and then seasonal events. So they have five hundred dollars. They've never proposed to spend that much. The highest amount made in twenty thirteen and two eleven. I'm not sure where that number came from. Noah's ever complained about it not being enough or wanting to do more. John, do you have any more feedback on it? It's a few hundred dollars, it's not that much, but it's just.
The reasoning was she, she wants to get into publishing, library work minutes.
Yeah, those are already published by law. And it's about nine dollars per month. They're small, they don't put much in there.
And then she is going more advertising about it than is happening at the library and all of the places.
So she plans to use it for additional advertising. Everybody okay with that? Building repairs, this is a big one. We have fifty three thousand four hundred dollars in there right now. The project includes seals around windows. These are all estimates right now, but about eight thousand log repairs and G P P inside, fifteen thousand. East gutter replacement, five thousand begin that patio, re-landscape designed, twenty thousand. And then AC repairs, which is in professional services, the floor that we took out, that's fifty four hundred. And I thought they were getting that fixed.
We have no choice, we're getting it done now. So we can take that out. Right off, we don't have to do it this year.
Re-landscape, what, what is the purpose of that?
We have water standing, there's three planters on the back that have been used. And we've got plume coming in now into the building. So we need to get those planters removed, get that drainage away from that wall. Because it's just holding a lot of water in this wall.
I don't understand, we had this conversation last time.
It needs to be done right away, you're going to have to start building, you need to be done.
Yeah, right away.
You're going to have, you're going to have the same problems that Chris is having here or ways of first.
So we have, that's a must do, it's a structural.
So some of this fifty three thousand, is that?
Forty eight now.
Forty eight, is that part of what you was going to?
Yeah, yeah.
It was twenty thousand she had down for the last year.
Well, and I just added everything up in there, that's what I can put, so let it go. Eight thousand. Fifteen thousand.
Would it be?
Is it possible to get?
Forty eight.
If you add all of this. Is it even?
Yeah.
Would it be possible to close like both those jobs for this one we have in the back over here?
It's not replacing concrete, it's removing all that's back there now without destroying the nice concrete that's back there now at the, at the library. Get, get all that stuff off and reseal that wall. Fix the drainage, it's not spinning. I think that's a good reasonable estimate.
Inch, last time I looked at the library in the back, and it's been there. So you, so you know, all of us know, it's been there for probably fifteen years. It's pitched backward and up on one side. And they came back later, back then, and said it was because of compaction.
Got two estimates now, so.
There is no warranty, that, that building warranty.
Running gone, right?
That's a six year old.
Yeah, I know.
It was there for. We have to.
I'm not going in. So what's our final number, forty eight?
Forty eight and it, it wasn't twenty that we took off, it was fifty four hundred.
The AC repair this year.
So forty, so, everyone okay with all the other costs there?
Yep.
Equipment repairs, twelve hundred. That's three hundred dollars extra than the maintenance agreement that they have, but there may be some of the repairs that are needed. Street, everybody okay with that? Street walk repairs, fourteen nine. That includes cracked ceiling, the front entry, twenty six hundred and back patio, twenty eight hundred. Parking lot cracked seal and eight lines, seven thousand paint lights, handrails. Paint lights, handrails, benches and signs, 2,500.
How much longer is that? What have we been talking about?
It's got the difference in cracks in it. If we get those sealed up, that's part of the water issue.
We were going to pour concrete back there.
No, it's got a joint seal. Just as soon as safe, fix the crack.
And please, just like we've done at T C, all these requests are reviewed with the department. So the estimates and the repairs chosen as well. Is everybody okay with that one? Supplies, 13,000. This is one where I have supplies and books highlighted. If you look back at previous history for supplies, I'd like to note, and I can give you some specifics, that supplies and books are supplemented yearly for grant funding dollars received. There were 3,700 in supplements in 2021 so far. So that, when you do your supplemental appropriation organs to get that money, we increased that expense budget. So it's a large increase over the year before and it includes increases that were put in this year for grant money. So now you're matching grant money too. Supplies, same thing, 2,700 so far. John, sorry, books, 1,000 so far this year in supplements in books and 1,850 in 2020. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at previous years and you're thinking, oh, it's not that big of an increase. Well, there were supplements made that was grant money. So now you're matching grant money each year if you use that grant block. John, she just wanted more.
There's some random.
I put both the books and supplies are annually supplemented with grant money. That's what's in there. But the rest is just the regular supplies they use. And John, I asked.
I can make an explanation if you want. Okay, if we lower that number, that's okay. You understand it's just getting grants that cover things like the summer reading program where those supplies are required.
Like bikes and they buy prices and stuff.
So if we lower that one, her book budget, all of her books have gone up. So if you're going to take her one, at least don't take the others what she said.
But we're doubling the book budget request also. We didn't double supplies. We just requested an increase of about 4,000. But the book budget request is doubled at 20,000.
So her request was if we touch supplies, they'll touch books. If we touch books, don't touch supplies.
Yeah. Go ahead and give somewhere. She understands she can't get grants, but the grants are specifically usually summer reading. She gets, she can get supplies related to summer reading, but it's generally not just the books that she buys all the time. The DVDs that are required. It's not those items that the grants go to. They particularly go with summer reading.
I have to remember this is a new person that in a long time from the library she needs to take over.
And she's only here for a year. Get somebody started. So she's trying to do it her way.
Okay, supplies, 13,000. I'm going to move on if I don't hear any changes. 1,500 janitorial supplies. That, if you look back, that is an increase over previous years since old provider used to provide all the supplies. And that's something else that's kind of up in the air and wants to be decided instead of clean. What those services will entail in the city, if supplies are not wrapped, we're not going to know. So we are leaving at 1,500. Travel and conference, that's for two, to go to Aberdeen for the state conference. And then one to go to a summer read conference and then the library convention is two balls. So 4,200 is the increase for travel and training. If anybody have any questions or concerns about that dollar amount? We're not in travel and training. We're not looking at 2020 expenses compared to previously. They've spent over 2,000 in one year and took away about 1,800 in travel and training. But do we have new staff members? We'll have a new library director. Travel assistance, trails every year as of the past year. So if anybody have any intentions to that increase amount for 2022? I'm sorry?
I have to do two.
Yeah, it says two, but they have five employees.
Yeah, Aberdeen trip will be the two primary parts, the library director in training. We need to get it to the other direction.
Telephone, they have 3,500. And just a note there, the library applies for participation in an E-rate program that helps offset the cost of internet expenses and low income communities. It's variable. The amount we'll get, if we'll get it. And this hopefully new interim library director will continue with the activity of applying for that that we all wanted. Electricity, here's a facility affected by the increase in the notice that we received. Propane, 3,500. Computer software, they use a program called Overdrive at 1,600 a year. Ballit at 1,200 a year. Cybrarian at 750 a year. Veronix at 300. Star Logic at 500. And they're adding child protection encryption at 650.
It's called Sonic Wall. Black Hills Technology, clearly the four.
Is that the child protection equipment is called Sonic Wall?
Sonic Wall is the name of it.
Is that why the increase?
Yes.
Yeah. It's so that the way it is, I don't know the other.
And then books and the increase to books over last year's budget and amount is 10,000. Which is requesting 20,000 books per year. So total budget, 323,905.
So does anyone move to drop that books down to 15?
It's still going to increase over next year and they still get about 3,700 in grants accordingly. Join once. See a little nod. Nobody's really drastically nodding their heads. Come on now.
I was referring that readers were leaders and we have a phenomenal library. You don't want anything from us.
Well, you're adding what the request is to double.
Yeah.
So you'd still be adding five from last year. You wouldn't be taking anything away. So let's be careful with the words we use.
From 15, but like that's it. I might don't want to be choking.
Let's be careful with the words we choose because they do have power and adding 5,000 is not okay.
I think that's a good problem.
Okay, do you want to leave it at 20?
Me?
I'm willing to get money. But I'd be okay with 20.
I'm okay with 50. I have 200,000 to go, so.
318,925 is our total. 50,000, which is an increase of 5,000 over last year, which last year included grant money.
So what was that total again? I'm sorry.
318,925. Recreation is the next one out. That's on page 20. All right, this also has the salaries and wages not calculated. The project headquarters is less than 22,000. Oh, that's not an increase due to the increased programs every year, which require more instruction. 18,000 is the amount calculated in there. Salaries and wages for the, right, the parket head total. We were able to do, but it's hard to estimate salaries and wages for recreation, the parkets, since it's so dependent on programs.
But you're down 4,000 is the one choice.
Yeah, but we've only spent.
This year doesn't really count at all.
Well, this year they had a good recreation program that ran out of regular. Okay. This year was similar to years past, so we had 17,000 in 2019. If you want to ignore 2013, if it works, if you don't know the program like we did, so we didn't contribute a paper after the early. 13,000 in 2018, 14, as much as 20 in 2016.
She's now doing winter time stuff for four. We just had summer training also.
Well, since we have recreation here. 318,250. Since we have you here, what did you want? What would work for you?
So in 2019, recreation was changed from summer rec to recreation. At that time, we started open gym, went from March through October. And quite honestly, this was brought up to me in February. I was already working on the summer rec program. So you could say three quarters of the year, which was only me at that time. We went into the year with yes, let's change this to recreation, but it wasn't a full year. Let's prep for it. And it has never been done before. So then we have COVID. And then this year, we have, honestly, I didn't know until March for sure if we were going to get to do this. A lot of people were like, I think I'm going to hold off. And later they're like, I'm definitely going to do this next year. So I didn't do the normal planning in the normal year because we didn't know for sure if we were going to be able to do all these things. The temperature was really up the public. So that being said, we have not had a full year of quote unquote recreation to see what we can do. We did have open gym again. We're having it now. A group of nine people came to park and rec last week, whatever it was, asking for more stuff. We started a music and movement class that had 25 parents and toddlers. Huge success. They wanted again in the winter months, we're working with the schools for collaboration to develop that, maybe using a building from them since gymnastics is here. We have an instructor for that. I don't really believe that this has been given a proper opportunity to see where it can go. We're not asking for more money. We're asking for an opportunity to develop this with recreation as what can we do more of the year than just summer rec? And offer to adults, which, you know, the adult thing we did start has soared through the roof. So plus, I know programs are not, this is not about making money. But there's been a lot of work into getting a reasonable total of our fees. We are still at least half or more or less than fees across the country, including some local. And our general fund went from, it increased by 50% so far this year over 2019. This is taking a lot of work. And I still believe there's more that we can do to stay within our budget, but offer more options to.
John, after your visit, we do change it from 22 to 18. Are you sure?
My thought is if it takes off, if it's super incredible next year and it blows everybody's mind, then we have that opportunity to put that money back to more people. We need to, the revenues, if they continue coming in, it's not a money-making department. His purpose is community. But that money that is taking in is supporting that program as well. So I think the 18 is reasonable to see what happens. If it really takes off and if we have to supplement appropriate, we'll know. This year with the 18, we're just right at 57% of total budget gives. So less than half, but right over half this year. I'm hopeful that we have to supplement appropriately next year because it's going so great. But until we see the, I think the numbers Misty's put together and that I've touched on as well, I think are reasonable.
Well, and I tried to attempt to get at, you know, even at the funds, of course, it's hard to estimate. But we, right now, we're just working off what we know Cathy will make. Because it is so dependent on who she gets. She can have a program and people want to sign up for it, but she can't get an instructor. The program has to cancel. Or she gets an instructor and she wants to run the program, she doesn't get enough participants to make it worth it. So I'm okay either way. I'm okay with that in the 22 back here. Knowing that you're going to have a number you're going to have to get to, I'm okay with not putting it in there. I think we all agree when you voted to let it go year round, you want to see the program grow. We just don't have enough. Yeah, enough of time has passed with a normal year to know what that's going to look like. So I'm okay with the way that.
So you said 50, it says 73.
He must be looking at June.
I'm looking at June.
And this, so this, these base periods are the busiest for recreation. Most of the programs have it in the summer. The things that we're developing through the winter are going to be new. So I think he's looking at June's and you're looking at more recent.
The other thing is in 2019, when we offered that winter swim, I mean, that was like a fluke. Oh my gosh, let's throw it together and see what happens. We had as much as we do for swim in the summer. I mean, people jumped on that like crazy and this year also. So, you know, it does take a lot to organize this and get it done. And COVID kind of stopped us a little bit in keeping that momentum going. So when, when I see these figures, my biggest deal is when I see the word trend and then I'm like, okay, what is trend? Well, 2020 was considered in that. Excuse me. Our 2020 numbers aren't up there, but they're awful.
They are.
And, and I, you know, I kind of, that's a little frustrating to me because I think apples and apples. Yeah.
If you watch the news, COVID's on the rise again, maybe not here, but you don't know.
We don't know. That's it. I just don't want to be back here begging if we do blow it out of the water when we haven't had a whole year of seeing where this can go. And now we have all school, new school people to work with. So I'm starting over again, building some relationships with them. So who knows?
I'm okay with John saying to you, figure that he came up with a supplementary.
And we review twice a year.
We've been, we've been warned, so it won't be a, what do you mean Cathy? Where'd this come from? So I'm good with the 18. If we need, if we get, if we get to supplementally appropriate, if we need, now we'll get in the killer.
So can I put that in writing and you guys sign that?
It's recorded.
It is being recorded?
This is one hour and 27 minutes into recording. Do you want to make a note of that?
One hour, please. That's, thank you.
Uh huh. Fair enough. So all these other numbers, payroll taxes, unemployment. Professional services, they pay umpires for baseball and the Shagger, they call these fees at 300 dollars per fee. That is, we have a lot of things this year that was great. And Cathy, have you heard of any changes to those Shagger league fees for 2022? Where are they going to be about?
Oh, I'm sure they'll go up, but I am, you know, you had mentioned in, we haven't done the transfer yet.
Right.
And I think that it is very fair to go with the extra instructors and coaches because of the higher numbers. But I'm trying to get, you know, the Ross jerseys and stuff in first.
Okay.
So things are going to be increased on them.
Supplies and materials, 2,000. That's just supplies for various activities. Travel and conference, that is for the rent cross annual registration fee. It's not related to travel and conferences. Cell phones, this is a new line item for personal cell phone reimbursement for policy. That's $25 a month. She doesn't have an office. Laura doesn't have a phone number. And it takes, as she said, a lot to organize that. So.
And I do my own Wi-Fi reimbursement for personal use of her cell phone is being added this year.
And then she took my old laptop because I had to get her replacement and that's not lasted her very long. She needs a new laptop, saying bank doesn't have an office or works remotely, remotely. And our IT guy gave us an estimate of $850. That would include the laptop and then office.
I'm not using mine.
I know, but they are dedicated for counties to use grant money to buy that. So 850 for a new laptop. $2,800 is a transfer out. This is a transfer to our 501 fund, which is our hospice capital improvement profits fund. We have an arrangement with the baseball and T-ball folks that they'll donate the time that they're doing the program in exchange for us tying a dollar amount to that and putting it into this fund that's dedicated for the use of improvements for baseball. So this is an estimate, 2,800.
I got things going for this year.
Yeah, they've done the improvements in the field. They did scoreboards. They're talking about building different fields. So there are separate groups. They get to decide what they want for that, but that's what that is. So 28,575 for recreation with no changes.
So why did that go down to 2,800?
Because we paid, we're estimating. Because we paid, we're estimating for 24 this year. We paid 23, 22, 24 since inception, it's never been higher than 2,500, so.
Because with six teams, we had four set up. We were probably going to add two.
Four was the estimate that we used already this year for this one. So that's still $400 more.
You know what, you guys gave the leeway, if we need it, we need it. And by the way.
Uh-oh.
That's all it is in the year. That computer, I am going to continue using Misty's. The problems that it has just to looked at, and I said, you know, can you fix this? And he's like, it's either gonna die tomorrow in six months, or it could last five years. I will continue using this, everything is saved on flash drive. That's if it goes wack.
Well, not that by next year, you're gonna need it. So I think it's important that's in there.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not going to just buy one.
You've already got a computer, you don't wait for it to die.
All right. Solid waste fund is next on our list, I think that's page 35. John's still excited. Professional services and fees, 100% of the collected revenue goes to our service provider. And then there's $4,000 for city garbage and cleanup. $250 for repairs and maintenance. John, I think these notes are from last year, $2,500 to repair perimeter fencing.
That's all done.
Yeah, okay, so I'll put those out. 500 for supplies and materials. And then machinery and equipment, he's ready to talk to you about, that's $17,500, we need some roof tarp.
With all the new residents we have in town and those asking for two garbage cans, we get 50 to go out between Christmas and now. We have 12 left. So I need 200. That's what our contractors recommended, because that should last about two years.
That's what's $17,000 this year?
Yep, $87 a piece, that's the cost per unit delivery.
So $227,250, if you remember when we went through revenue for the solid waste fund? Because now we're outside of the general fund, we are in an enterprise fund, it's accounted for differently than the governmental fund. You have, even with the purchase of the tarp, you have projected profit of $950. So we can certainly afford them. I guess that was an easy one.
My other question would be, if there is money left now in the budget, do we want to get 100 this year and 100 next year?
I don't see any amount budgeted this year.
No. We have one more cleanup, right?
Yep.
Yeah, there wasn't any budget. But if we need it, there is fund balance in that fund that can be used. So we can discuss that at admin finance if it's what it needs to be this year. All right, so I lied, we made a book of that. So cemetery department is page 17. Now we're back into the general fund, so we're back adding and subtracting from that $2,000 number until we talk about the 701. Cemetery is page 17. All right, so we have one full-time and one seasonal employee in our cemeteries. Not calculated, our cemetery caretaker is requesting a year-round part-time worker, March through November, 1,000 hours at Maintenance One and a $2 increase personnel.
No, oh yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry, you're right.
We did talk about. No, absolutely. So 3,000, 2,200, 1,200. This cemetery caretaker is also shared in the maintenance department. So sometimes some of her budgets, dollars for salaries, might just get paid out, it's not reversible if she's doing. Well, we budget her higher amount here, let that work itself out. Group insurance, unemployment, professional, SDPAA, they had slightly decreased in costs. Professional services, they have weed spraying and chemicals, and they listed a price increase in noxious weeds is the reason for the small increase in professional service requests. Stop me if you have any questions, do my thoughts on.
That's higher?
Yes, it is, because she wants to get her certification now, because it's really easy to get in 2022.
Vehicle repairs, she adds the 2,000.
Wes has got a question. That go lady's free, isn't she? She don't.
Are you still, she's still on?
We have vehicle repairs, 1,000. She drives an older model Dodge, ramping up. Building repairs, we have 400. Not a lot of buildings in the cemetery, but the main mower building, we need some roof panel sections replaced. All of it, not more replacement, just some repairs. We have 400. 500 in equipment repairs, that's blade belts, employees, fuel filters. Street and sidewalk repair, we have some notes, I think they're from last year. The fixed barrier wall that fell and DGA for roads, there's no dollar amount requested in there, those are the same notes from last year. So she doesn't have to. DGA.
It's a great area.
Sewer water repairs, that's general irrigation repairs and water line repairs, so 200. 200 for supplies, she uses supplies, she has stone locations, she needs a baby tree chicken wire and ready marking flags. Janitorial supplies, $75. I think she's loved that, having gear, both of this year. Minor tools, 250. We have a half-inch N-PHY curl, stainless blade and socket, just listed on there as a need. 250 for grass seed, 1,500 for gas, oil and diesel. Nothing for signs. Electricity of 740. 7,000 in machinery, she's looking to replace mowers at $3,500 each and get rid of two mowers that have reached the end of their useful life. So total requested for cemeteries is 74, 490.
The salaries, isn't that $2 an hour raise?
Nope. For the part-time person? She does have a part-time seasonal already, was asking for part-time year-round and those not. They do share help, so if she needed somebody, she would.
That was where she was going with it, she didn't get anybody this year at all. That was a big problem. And everybody's as thin as they are, she didn't, I mean, she only used about 40% of her total salary budget right now. But if she had somebody that should be present longer than just that seasonal period, it would dump her out.
But she doesn't get to dedicate enough time to support either, because she's a play, her maintenance side act.
She's one player in the bathroom, right there.
Well, she's not a full-time part-time person, working the streets, you know what I mean?
Well, they already do share staff.
Yeah. But typically, more seasonal are like high school kids, they work at, you know, a little more of a regular person that can stay home and pass the school season.
The other one we wanted to cover is on page 42. It's kind of tied to the cemetery, but it is outside of the general fund. It's our 701 Fund, which is cemetery perpetual care. Like we talked about on Tuesday, there's law established for what we can do with this money and how much we have to have. We have no expenses projected coming from this fund in 2022. That typically happens is if there is a need, the cemetery boards a need, they request the council, and you would take funds that are available in this account and appropriate money to spend for the request. Any questions? We're gonna move on to highways, streets and roadways or maintenance, that's page 11, we're back within the general fund now. All right. Page 11, highways, streets and roadways. Second or third largest funded department in our general fund. They do a lot of work out of this department. We talked, we were talking about how we estimate wages, how it's difficult to estimate who's gonna spend what time where, because they're all sharing staff. Overall, what we call maintenance department. We have 220,000 projected for salaries and wages. Not calculated, is a $2 an hour wage increase for entry-level maintenance one and part-time workers. Requested and not calculated, $2 an hour wage increase for them. The payroll taxes, the retirement, the workman's comp, you'll notice that's quite a bit higher than you see in other departments. Workers' comp risk rates, employees based on their job functions and responsibilities. This one has high risk, so the premiums show that. Group insurance, 66.5. We did add a new full-time employee in 2021, if you remember. We expanded to the city benefits, that was an addition. And then we had an employee who received the 50% of the family benefit that had the child income. So they're no longer coming. Unemployment, 850. Insurance, this is higher. This is our self-reserve insurance lines, covers all their vehicles and liability insurance for this department. Professional services and fees. This is kind of high, if you do the math, it doesn't come up to that much. But they do random drug testing at $8 each, that's part of a SBDOT consortium that we're part of. It's if you have a CDL.
Federal law.
Yep, it's federal law. And you operate on the road, like you have to participate in this, and they randomly pick from our pool of CDL licensed employees and do these tests. They do fire extinguisher testing and recharge, we keep fire signatures in all of our equipment, all of our buildings. They have delivery fees at $50 each when they order parts and are running up to rapid. They hire for large tree removal or other specialty services, they have professional services and fees. And then also, we added $12,000 for the CWT worker. That's compensated work therapy program at the VA. We love to have them when we can, it's not consistent, sometimes they go away. Sometimes we get the opportunity to have a great one that turns into an employee. So this is an estimate and that varies. But as you look at their employees, they have fairly consistently for the last three years, had someone that works for the city under this program that gets paid out of this budget.
How come we've only used 3.22%?
That people who use a moving, have a CWT employee for a large part of this year. And I call them a toy, but they're not. It's contract paper through the VA and that compensated work therapy program. So we don't control how long they stay, if they work out. So it's great when we get a great person.
We've got a good one now, and he leaves us in August.
And hopefully we get another good one. Last good one we had ended up being a full-time employee, so.
Yes, we did, we did well once.
It's a great program, I know we had it, but it's variable.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons why you don't keep, keep on the CWT worker is because they're not part of the program. So they want to go back home and do the program, so.
The large, the large tree removal on that island, we did want that to escalate a little bit, because we've got a lot of maintenance to do on these alleys. He doesn't have staff, he looks at tree cutters, be able to cut those way up the back and assist with some of those big trees that were having issues with the nails. That's why you add a little extra one.
And we did have two CWT people that we expected to be paid through 2021. So when you look at the budget, they're now, it's high, and that's why they're low on their percentage queues. Because we were lucky enough to have two for a while, and that didn't last. We have one, and we added one full-time employee to that current issue or two.
Would we move this to higher up, part-time rental person?
We did add a part-time person this year also, another seasonal, not year-round. But we added a full-time, we added a part-time seasonal, we have the option for the CWT.
We didn't have any people.
Rentals, if they have to replace lights in shop, they rent a lift, $500.
Wouldn't that be all rentals, like we got a mower this year that we rented?
Yeah, we don't plan to do that, but we plan for ours to work.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be on that rental? There's, it says here to date, nothing.
Yeah, no, it wasn't under rental, and I can look back and see when we paid that. And that was garden street, was that, early this year? I can look back where we paid that out of, but it could have been professional services and fees or machinery and equipment, it may have come out of. I can look back.
Actually, right on the end of 2018.
Just before the getting rid of the trash product. We were trying to get garden street taken care of, mower went down.
And since we spent $8,644 in 2020, it's probably 2020.
That's when the money came out, we used it in 2018.
Vehicle repairs, remember the notes we went over on Tuesday, we had that big lump of stuff? They had reviewed for vehicle and equipment repairs. So they have an aging truck fleet, they'll need at least one transmission and one rear end replaced. They have 13.5 for estimates. John, if you have anything to say, Dan, if you don't know.
Just, I don't have anything newer than 15 years old that's driving. You gotta have tire, when tire goes down, it's hot work, it's up, it's cut, that's the hook. It's just, it's an aging fleet, required maintenance, so. The playover site, safe side, that's where we got that number from. We had to give up something, we did give up a couple thousand, we'll be about to look at that.
Wes, did you just come up?
Are you still on track to buy a new truck this year?
Can it use truck this year?
No, I thought you guys were talking about buying another dump truck.
Not a dump truck this year. We got it, we got a dump truck last time, we went through that grant program, and we didn't qualify because you'd have to dispose of the truck. And the general that we wanted to get rid of didn't fit in their timeframe of the truck to get rid of this one now.
Everybody okay with 13.5, or you want to swing a couple thousand dollars there, what are your thoughts?
I believe we have 13.5, we're hoping to get it to be it up.
And we end up appropriating, which is what we end up doing almost every year if they have equipment. It's not like we tell them, we don't squeeze them and say you can't fix the equipment. They fix it and we appropriate money. Building repairs, they need some gutter repair. They have six roof section panels that need repaired, and they need a new water heater. So 3,800 is the estimate there.
We get the heater and stuff, we're doing that this year?
We had the HVAC this year, they just got it installed, finished it today, so we have heat and air once again. Don't say anything more about heat and air.
Equipment repair is another big one, my vehicle repair. There's some if, this, that, and that in here, so that's hydraulic service on a little loader, $15,000.
It's a, it's 4,000 and something hours on it now, so it's due for its good overall maintenance, which usually winds up costing us a hydraulic pump. So we're not buying a new little loaders, and we're gonna have to maintain one we got for a couple of years. It's the newest piece of equipment we got.
Temporary fix on a big loader, not sure what's temporarily being fixed, but 20,000, other 4,000. Or we can deduct 12.5,000 if we get to the bottom of here and we determine we want to buy a new loader.
Yep. That was, that was the trade-off. We put, we put another band-aid on it, we need all that money, but if we're gonna get the new one, we can, this one, if they want it.
So to continue that conversation, I'm gonna jump down to machinery and equipment, and we'll talk about that, and then we'll go back up and go through the others. So we can take 12.5 off of the request for equipment repairs and maintenance. If we purchased a new, like 2022, 2021, 2022? Brand new?
Yeah, maybe brand new.
Not new to us, like.
Brand new 2022.
Big John Deere loader, we have some options. What's put in, plugged in temporarily to the budget is the first year of six-year payments on a lease to own at approximately 5% interest. These are final numbers, it's based on credit and markets. And that includes a three-year warranty. If we were to buy it outright, it'd be 212,000. So we jumped that number up, we doubled it. If we lease these, I've just noted, if we end up leasing it at this expense, I would move it to a principal and interest. I would move it to a principal and interest expense account, because it would be a lease payment and it wouldn't get purchased. But it'd be the same number, so for now, we're just leaving it in there for conversation, but-
At the end, we will own it.
No cash?
There's no balloon payment at the end with this setup. We get a full, all-inclusive warranty the first three years. The last, last three years is not all-inclusive, but it's still a warranty service program.
So right now you have both built in there, and we're gonna do one of the others, so that'll help our final number.
I think that's our ground.
Get them, get the, get the lease to own it.
Is there a trade value on the old one that you could get?
The one, we want to try to keep your old one, black, that was trying to happen, and we had to have one for snow, golf course had to use ours, we got, we had one that was rather bad now, the hydraulic damage totally.
So it's on the back, isn't it?
Yeah, it would be a backup and would be a first-line piece. I'm all for that. Let's get the new one and take the twelve-five off and go make it somewhere where- Talk to Caterfield. John Deere, we tried out both of them, and John Deere is what everybody liked the thing better. Had less computer.
Do we get the same size we got? And I don't think we need anything bigger.
Yes, it's not. Do it down there, do it free up, will you? That's what we estimated it at. That was already bought in? We had that kind of in.
So we changed equipment repairs to twenty, I thought I heard a consensus, that's the way to go.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Anyone object? So I changed equipment repairs to twenty-six-five, which is deducting twelve thousand, five hundred. Still giving them what looks like an adequate amount, looking at history to do equipment repairs without any squeezing. And then I left in, although on our final budget, I'm gonna break that out to a principal and interest expense, the thirty-nine-five, expecting our first year of a six-year lease to be around that dollar amount. So I'm gonna go back up then and keep going through the other items. Street walk repairs, fifteen thousand. That says just patchwork, so major projects were done in the two-one-two fund, which we'll talk about, including repairs to alleys and unpaid street millings. Anything to say about that, John? That's reasonable, it's similar to what we-
It's similar to what we usually have. It goes more toward patchy when we have a big issue we've got to do right away and have somebody in. And we have sidewalks shattered, like we get down there.
Where are we gonna be, or are we gonna be talking about the repair, replacement of the steps by the official church?
We're gonna do that.
Well, is that just a patch job?
Yep, we're talking about future stair repairs, get that in the budget in the two-one-two.
Yeah, partially in parks, I think.
Oh, you're right, and in parks, I'm sorry.
It's not in this one, three thirty-one.
And parks, you're right.
Parks would stick.
Onward, where was I? Supplies, we have seven thousand. This is an increase over years past. If John can talk about the conversation with the department head about it. But the notes include safety and routine PPE supplies, gloves, glasses, hearing protection, helmets, maintenance items, coordinated pipes, sand, dent, spray, stone, et cetera. It's probably a bit higher, so John, what was the reason that that's so high?
I think it's the height of what I was supposed to perform.
Okay. There we go, that's why we need those. Was it four thousand? Anybody object to that increase? It looks like they're pretty high year-to-date, so an increase would be reasonable.
Now, increases are across the board on just about everything, but when it comes to PPE, that is just outrageous. They're selling, they're selling five masks for like fifteen dollars now.
Clothing, we have thirty-one hundred. We formalized and listed in the notes the details on the clothing and how we get to that. So that's four hundred dollars each for full-time employees, there's seven of them. That's two hundred dollars for clothing and two hundred dollars for reimbursement or up to two hundred. Reimbursement for the amount they spend. Plus one hundred dollars each for part-time employees, we have three of those. Janitorial supplies, we have two thousand. Minor tools, we have forty-eight hundred. Gas, oil, and diesel, we have fifteen thousand. Signs, we have three thousand. Travel and conference, we have-
Can I stop you right there?
Yep.
We had a conversation a few months back about signs dedicated to let people know you can't spend the night at the park.
Already ordered, already placed.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, if all that got ordered this year.
This, this one gets eaten up with speed limit signs that are worn out and get run over and pedestrian crossing signs. So get wiped out every year.
Those are three dollars.
Six hundred dollars for box.
Six hundred?
Travel and conference. Travel and conference, we have fourteen hundred dollars budgeted for this year. And that's travel to the safety conference in here, times two.
Two guys, two people.
Telephone, fifteen hundred. Electricity, ten thousand, five hundred. Propane, eight thousand. Cell phones, seven hundred. Machinery, oh, we already talked about machinery. So we have a total of five hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars in streets department.
Last year we had talked about, there were people who were advocating for adding an employee to street department. And I asked you to, is that, is adding an employee to street department one of the right departments? Is that a minus?
We added him. We added that employee after that discussion, and we have a new full-time employee in the street department. He has been added, and yes, he's included in the figures to continue.
We added Scott.
An employee.
I'm sorry. But yeah, we didn't have a part-time, that part-time one can stick around, and we can have that discussion. We'll wait until a little.
Okay, good. What I advocated for last year was, let's not go ahead and hire individuals. Because we were combining a couple different departments, hoping we could increase our work. Our amount of people. And if that didn't work out for us, then we reconsidered this year. And I'm just saying that our street department is struggling with everything that we expect them to do. And I'm still concerned that they don't have enough people. What am I missing?
What we did last year was, we had a seasonal person, and we created a full-time benefited position. We didn't enjoy, we didn't let it go. That year, last year, we only had two seasons. This year, we added back in the third seasonal and left the full-time additional position.
And I'm saying, I'm still saying, but they don't have enough.
Well, I agree with Bob, one hundred percent.
That's why I'm saying with those CWT workers, if we took that money and made it a permanent position.
We still have support that, right?
Yeah. It's nice, yeah, I know, but it's nice to have someone that we depend on here around.
Yeah, and our trouble is staffing. It's finding people to fill and hold the positions that we're struggling with. So adding one of them, we need to be fully staffed. We need all of our positions filled with people that are staying in the positions.
The discussion goes back to that two-dollar-an-hour increase for time and entry level. That's kind of what wage market is right now, but we're gonna have that discussion past all this. But you know, just looking at the local market, we're prepared that. You hear that portion of walk-through, you don't have a problem.
What's our entry level rate?
Class one seasonal's been. But we have class two, which-
Class two with a little experience, I think it's all public layer, so.
No, we're not fifteen like they know.
We already got-
See more yourself, you guys.
We already got one person in life or a job we've been about yet. So if we get quite a few that apply to a job, maybe.
We have for that, it's definitely something we should talk about, and I think we came to.
Not great law, street department. We ask it almost everything.
It's horrible, and it's going down, it's going up.
Wes, can I ask why your sinker propane's gonna go down?
It's usage, it's based on usage. And we don't know, we don't think it's gonna go down, but that-
It ain't going down, I can guarantee you that.
The whole price, you're talking price-wise?
Yeah, so I was just wondering why you had a thousand dollars left for this year.
And we don't know what our-
I do.
Job security.
They'll get as much propane as they need to keep the building warm, we're just estimating this point. If any of you would like to request that number be increased, looking at the usage in the past, would you happen to do that?
Will we let that big tank go down, so we can get tanker loads to just live in it on? We don't know.
The last time we tried to do that, we couldn't get a tanker load. We had to take a smaller one. I don't know the problems with propane business, but. That is the goal, that's why we kept that great big tank. We have to let it almost run out before we can fill it up. It practically has to be empty to get a whole tanker load, because there's some room for extension, you can only fill it up to eighty-five percent. So it's really oversized for the place. It hasn't seemed to save us the money that we thought it would by keeping it and trying to fill it in full tanker loads. It runs out, then we have to rope fast, get propane, and this last time we couldn't get a tanker load of propane. Or the price, because it was, the time they needed it was like December, it was July, and it just got a little bit, so.
If you fix the gauge on the tank, that problem could all be solved.
They fixed the gauge on the tank, the last time Nelson's did it.
They didn't fix it.
We got a bill for fixing the gauge on the tank.
We did some work on it, but we didn't fix the gauge.
What does it need, Wes?
It needs a new gauge.
A brand-new gauge?
Yep. Tank's gotta go dry first.
Well, yeah, I understand that part.
But I mean, they-
What's, what's the gauge?
Maybe that's why they didn't get a-
They, they can set another tank there and run off of it while they were fixing the big one. But it's not, it's not impossible.
I can follow up, and I think this is the ideal time to run it dry.
Bingo.
And that might be what they're doing, that might be why they didn't get a load in the last-
But that's basically Wes, I can get out of the puddle.
You're welcome. And summer field would be a lot cheaper than three months.
Yes. Okay, so we're revisiting snow removal, that's on page twelve, if we're ready to move forward. John has some updates for us from the conversations that we had on Tuesday.
Let's take a note. Snow removal, okay. It looked like we had a bunch of money left over in that budget when we had this discussion last time. Had a lot left over in 2021. The scraper, uh, the sander was that big-ticket item. Machinery, it's fourteen thousand, nine hundred. Due for delivery in October. They ordered it in February, they've been waiting all this time to get it. It's got the rear end and the snowplow F-five-fifty goes to inland to be replaced. That's the fifty-seven-hundred, forty, forty-one, forty-two hundred. He said it was four thousand dollars, but we're in the middle of that.
Does it mean more repairs, as we talked about now?
That's what that money is left over. So with that said, he said that gets the snow quickly packed up a little bit better, so we probably were at. So we've got some adjustments to how the company, on snow.
So are these amounts state missing?
Couple changes, three or four. So vehicle repairs, it's in the three thousand. Equipment maintenance, repairs and maintenance after nine eleven goes to twenty-five hundred. Bottom one, machinery, goes to seven hundred.
Still getting a plow for the red truck next year.
Correct.
What if, we had highlighted, I don't remember why, minor tools, nine fifty. Just leave that, I don't remember why we highlighted that.
I don't know either.
Maybe because we had so much budgeted this year and haven't been used. Probably were questioning it was not. But we have thirty-three fifty this year. Yeah, we spent eighty-four, thirty, ninety-seven, one forty-seven.
It's all right, I'd like to leave that, because I don't know. Billy said he had that thirty-three fifty for this year on ladder tools committed, so I trust that he's got it submitted.
Okay, so we now have a new updated amount for snow removal of seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars with those changes.
Seventy thousand.
Did I, what did I say?
Seven thousand.
Seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifty, sorry.
But those change nothing.
So every little bit helps, thank you all.
Thank you. Parks, page twenty-two. We're still in the general fund now. All right, salaries and wages, sixty-one thousand. This also had, has both time and a year-round full-time, year-round part-time, two part-time. So this designated shares with streets, estimating sixty-one thousand. Payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp, group insurance, unemployment. Self-polluted public insurance lines, insurance lasts for parks in the new population. Professional services, they also have weed spraying for parks and green spaces, green spaces and noxious weeds. There's cost increase in chemicals, so we have an increase in requests there. Vehicle repairs, nineteen hundred. Maintenance items include ranger, trailer, four-wheel drive truckster, and one set of tires. Build, building repairs, forty-two hundred. That's for some dugout repairs, vandalism at ER.
Bathroom.
Bathroom doors, eight bathrooms times three, and one bathroom roof, twenty-twenty-two. What's your mark? Does that customer need is included in here?
Well, he thinks it is, but he can't get to it this year. He's gonna try to get to it this year, that's a little odd, but they don't have any help. That's what they were still hoping to get, but we've only got two people working hard right now.
When I see Billy- I know. When I see him on a lawnmower. When I see him on a lawnmower, it tells me that they are fresh and well.
Billy had played bathroom the other day, I just got to know him.
Equipment repairs. Everybody okay with the forty-two hundred for building repairs in the plant, the repairs? Three thousand in equipment repairs, they maintain a lot of equipment, more speedy cars, HPs and UTs. Street walk repairs, fifteen thousand, five hundred, budgeted for twenty-twenty-two. That includes Freedom Trail sidewalk sections, estimating four thousand. Retaining wall of an H, not sure where.
Where that waterfall happened.
Okay, retaining wall along the Freedom Trail by the waterfall. Handrail, five hundred, same thing where, is that by the waterfall?
No, it's actually underneath the vibe of.
And that's nearby.
That gets real slippery there.
And then the retaining wall is by where the, what should I call it, the gate collapsed?
Near Kitty, four years.
And then in-house stair repairs. Fifteen-five, any questions, comments?
Where is the, the issue of the need for a handrail along the flood wall across from the motel?
I was hoping you'd take the rail that we're taking down off of River Street, suspend the time off, and take that.
It's about to be twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah. The seven, we couldn't afford replacing- Yeah, the seven, we couldn't afford replacing a whole set of steps, every quote I got on that was sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars. I agreed with the other group that said they were going after grants with the city assisting, uh, so, that's the direction we need to go, we're gonna replace a whole set. The repairs that they've done at the municipal turn, I think they've done really a very good job, we're gonna get a lot of service out of that. Everybody asked, but we think the repairers come before the act.
More ladies and walk-in, maybe?
It's still closed.
Yeah, they've got another six, six steps to go, and they're supposed to give us more.
They're looking for it, get back on the trail, it looks nice.
Okay, so sewer water repairs, we have thirty-five hundred. Bathroom fixture items, regular repairs at Butler and Mueller Center, and I said, why the Mueller Center?
The soccer field.
Oh, okay. So, I'll say a soccer field repair. Any questions, comments, or questions? We have five hundred dollars in fence tool repairs, that's just for facing routine fence maintenance only, not to replace any fences.
Right, we've only spent twenty-seven dollars and ten cents, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we've covered a lot more when we replaced that soccer field fence, so now we're going to go fix that fence and get a little more treatment.
So, they will be using it. Supplies, we have three thousand, um, paint, sand, paper, wood materials, steel sections, replacement fixtures, and select tables. So, they plan on replacing some tables, there isn't really any crossover.
Yeah, the payment cable is just, which is bad, they slowly but surely worked on those, the leakers got thrown on this year, with that S B P A thing. Whole brand-new set of leakers is eighteen thousand dollars.
Again, we have twenty-five hundred left, we've got eight hundred sixty-six, we've got quite a bit left for this year.
I think there's, I think there's actually some, it's, uh, just categorizing the wrong places, they bought a lot of them, they're just gonna put in those leakers.
If they do repairs on like the, if they tables and stuff, then they'll, they'll spend more of that in the leach box, so then it gets a little far there, so... Clothing, we have six hundred, using the same four hundred for full-time and hundred for part-time. Uh, two thousand for janitorial supplies, adding extra cleaning and sanitizing. Minor tools, we have eight hundred, regular items as needed. They did note that they purchased two new weed eaters this year. Agricultural supplies, which is trees, grass seeds, planting trees seeds, soccer and baseball fields, fifteen hundred. Gas oil and diesel, twenty-five hundred. Actual use versus budgeted use, I put those notes in there, I think, over the past five years, I'm not sure if that's enough. For gas oil and diesel, but we needed to, probably. Signs, five hundred, that's for miscellaneous signs, including, bathroom identification. Electricity, ninety-one hundred. Improvements other than buildings, we have eighteen thousand. Not budgeted, replace softball field at Butler Park, thirty years old. Include one set of new leakers, or school, street park equipment, are the bills. Do I have any questions?
Parking equipment, I think we replaced-
Where were the big question marks for bathroom signs?
There you go.
Or make a unit sense? Eight, eight, I think they are. One day, I knew one of my friends, I didn't know it was a boy and girl. Um, but improvement other than buildings, eighteen thousand, um, any questions?
We just take that number by default, what we looked at, eighteen thousand five instead of leakers, somebody knows playground equipment, but we need to replace the playground equipment, school street, is used a lot, it's very dangerous, S B P A's, they take it down. We take it down and completely rebuild it, we'll have money left in that ledger.
I'm not familiar with the cost of the fencing for softball field, but I am, I am aware that the softball players are willing to put in labor. If you're gonna hear that, uh, number one, you know, by task, they're willing to put in labor somewhere.
And that may be a discussion we have as we get to next, next spring, what direction we're gonna go, we can't afford to replace the chain link, like we've been talking about for two years, the chain link is double the price.
Got it, these questions, and, and they're so far behind on manufacturing, I'm also, it is kind of-
I think that's a reasonable number, and we've come up with a solution on the softball field, we'll probably talk about that.
Then we have twenty-two hundred in machinery, they just want to replace, not replace yet, new two-style mowers into twenty-twenty-two. So, we have a total of one sixty-six, two ninety for the Parks Department. All right, we're jumping out of the general fund to the Evans Punch Fund.
Thirty?
Uh, thirty, thank you. The Evans Punch Fund, if you remember, we went through the revenue, um, we came up with six hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for revenue projected. We were reasonable in our revenue projections, there were a couple areas where we just maybe increasing it a little bit, but I did have another conversation with Krista today, she's comfortable with the revenue projections, and y'all were all so, so, we're at six hundred and twenty-eight five fifty for revenue. And right now, we'll go through, but we have eight hundred ninety-five, uh, one-ten, and expenses, so they would have a loss, or we would have a subsidy of two hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and sixty. Right now, we have that loss coming from our two-one-two additional sales tax, which will get- Well, actually, you don't have that on this list for expenditures, John, and we're gonna have to talk about that one, or two-in-one, well, that's okay, we'll get those at the end. Um, so, salaries and wages for Evans Punch. Uh, we have calculated three ninety-one, six hundred. We did add a full-time employee this year, um, not calculated in, so that new full-time employee is calculated in there, but not calculated in that. It's a request for a two-dollar hour increase for all part-time personnel, who's front desk, custodian, and lifeguard, and the potential of the elimination of the twenty, or two-hundred-dollar lifeguard bonus.
Not a big trade-off, I know, giving up the two-hundreds, but you get, get people to even consider being a lifeguard for, you've got to do that number up. Our lifeguard position is our most paid position in the city.
So, that's a conversation we decided to have later. Three ninety-one, six hundred includes a new full-time person in our estimate, we talked and reviewed the way we estimate salaries and wages, that Evans Punch is, is the best guess, it's a shot, and the Hurt Fund, and, and right now, her problem is finding staff not paying, so... We can't look at twenty equal twenty amounts, um, you leave those out, but the highest amount they've had is three eighteen in the past, but three ninety-one, six hundred should give them enough room to do some things and hire staff that they'll need for coverage. Thirty thousand for payroll taxes, retirement for the full-time employees, again, the added full-time employee, that's a quite see an increase there. Workers' comp, group insurance, same thing, uh, adding to the new full-time benefit of employee, increase that by eleven thousand. Um, unemployment, insurance, they had a big increase in costs when their property was reevaluated, so twenty-two thousand two hundred. Uh, if you remember, that it was the Mueller Center and Evans Punch that had the largest increases in property evaluations. And it's important that we have that evaluation, if something happens to the property, uh, replacement cost-
Replacement cost went to four-point-five million versus three-point-one million, that's a big difference.
But we want those facilities replaced, if something happens. Um, professional services, this is where their monitor processing, or their credit card processing is paid from. Black Hills Technology, Eagle Lab, Serval, which shows their towel delivery service, Sportsman. Actually, we moved their sports and software, so that's at the bottom now, but those include all those other charges. Publishing is their advertising, they kept the amount at twenty-five thousand and noted that setting for walkers no longer shares joint advertising opportunities. There was a time, we had a super strong, our, our city industry is super strong in advertising and marketing, and they took on that responsibility for these two facilities. Uh, they took that back when that, it was only a job, because there's another person in between, they took that responsibility back, um, when that person left the position, and so, there was a time they were doing things jointly, and they just noted that they're not doing any joint advertising.
Well, my fault, she wanted to point that out.
But, but there's somebody in between, so it's not that. Building repairs and maintenance, we have twenty-seven thousand. Their plans are health club, title, and the steam room, six thousand. Rear door replacement and E M A, which does that stand for emergency?
Yep.
E M A access, six-point-five, that, uh, six thousand five hundred. Acrylic and observation platform, instead of the chain link fence, thousand five, thousand five hundred. And begin women's locker room upgrades, nine thousand. Do you want to talk anymore about those plans, sir?
It's, uh, a lot of that's to shut down some things, the prison cage up there at the observation deck is gonna respond to a lot of people, so we wanted to replace that with acrylic, and for some reason, acrylic is really cheap this year, so we're gonna bring it down. I had never been in a locker room until we had this conversation, that place is nasty.
I've never been in the men's locker room.
Yeah, ours isn't that bad, I don't know if it's isn't that bad. Well, I said that it used to be, when I did my kiss there.
Just taking out the walls, the partition walls, so that they can clean up under those each room.
We still want separators, we're gonna like-
Yeah, they'll be separate, but they want to take the block, the separates out.
And then, and then the benches-
And the seats and the changing-
Yeah, the, the benches in each, um, change area, they're really rotting, yeah, it's always dirty, yeah.
Those were the parties.
Yeah, you know, I, I hesitate to sit on it, because I was afraid they'd collapse.
We're talking about composite materials for that.
So, do we want to move on, and there may be some areas in this budget in particular, because of their estimated loss, that we need to make some cuts, so do we want to stop and talk about those now, or do we want to get through and go back and talk about? I'd like to get through and go back. Okay.
I say charge on, yeah.
Equipment repairs, thirty-six thousand. Uh, this would be phase three of the H VAC update. Ventilation to remove the heat and moisture from the ceiling space over the pool. We talked about means and wants, John, I'll let you talk about why this is so important.
Uh, looking at structurally on that building, if we don't find a way to get that heat and moisture out of there, we're gonna be replacing the curtain on that ceiling, recently, that I left out. We've got a pretty good amount of money left this year, I'd like to start that project this year, as soon as we get over the tourist season, so I could reduce that number a little bit. We haven't got a firm price on that, where there's gonna be two or three units going up there. So, doing my best guess, based on what we talked to the different providers, if we can get started this year, we still got about twelve to fourteen thousand left for this year budget to get that project started.
But that is an important project, looking at cutting some-
That is something that was noted for the city purchase, the spirit is being, there, so, it's only taken us, what, so many years, I agree.
That's the first step to doing the maintenance that needs to be done, all those motors, we gotta get the moisture and heat off of them.
Yeah, you don't, then you're gonna be right back in the same old building.
Well, I'd like to charge through, but I heard you say that we can get some of that done this year, maybe decrease this amount a little bit, ten to-
I, I would like to give up ten on that, and then I will commit whatever they've got left this year, to start that project this year.
Supplies, we have fifteen thousand. Yeah, we went down to twenty-six. Fifteen thousand for supplies, twenty thousand for other materials for resale, these, this is merchandise to stop the gift shop. Clothing, two thousand, this is employee uniform apparel, front desk and lifeguard, and side dispatchers, just shirts. Uh, janitorial supplies, ten thousand. Minor tools, they have twenty-five hundred. There's routine replacement of the swimsuit spinners, they're two hundred dollars each, and then other minor tools. Historically, they haven't needed quite that much, um...
So, that's where you meet this year. They're cheaper to get those little cheap disposable ones than to get a big washer dryer, like-
That's what they've always had, is just a little-
Yeah, because we never had it before, and we had them donated to us, and then they didn't last very long, and now we're replacing them, but they're nice to have, and anything I just write them in.
They do.
So, um, they are year-to-date, uh, their minor tools, even replacing the spinners, they're at twenty-two percent. This may be an area we can take some off, but we'll charge on, I'll leave it highlighted. Uh, purification chemicals, we have three thousand. Additional disinfection, P O S COVID, and worry for hot tubs. Sixty for gas oil and diesel for the lawnmower. Food, that is for concession or resale, eighteen thousand. Signs, they would like to update some in-house signage, updated rules and directional banners. Travel and conference, they have a thousand, I remember the conversation when they were told to put, uh, the travel budget in there and then increase it. They are now doing all their, uh, lifeguard training in-house. We do now have four full-time employees there, though, that this travel budget is shared between. Um, and then, again, I could look at years past, for what was made out of there, especially twenty-twenty. Telephone, which includes cables, twenty-four hundred. In twenty-nineteen, we renegotiated our cable, uh, contract, ca, uh, I'm sorry, I lose my words, it was an ordinance, it's for cable franchise fee contract, um, and we're no longer paying for cable, we had a credit for a while that we stopped at twenty-four hundred, should cover it for the year. Electricity, they're a large user, so they see a large increase with the notification from Black Hills Energy of an eleven percent energy increase, and energy expense increase. They do the same thing with water and sewer, that all the other departments do, so we have a cell phone. Uh, nothing in improvements other than buildings for twenty-twenty-two. We have machinery and equipment, seventy-eight hundred. Plans to replacement pressure tanks, we say four tanks in twenty-twenty-two, done in twenty-twenty-one, and made P O S computer replacement imprinter, we have eighteen hundred, our I T guy writes at twelve hundred, should do it. So, we could maybe make a little increase there, I'm not sure about the replacement pressure tanks, where those tanks are at, and what that's for.
They're actually located behind the wall of the gift shop, and it's been a big issue this year, we had two down previously, we didn't replace them. We intended on replacing two per year, we didn't, so we've got to replace four next year.
What are their use parts, are they H VACs?
No, it's, it's circulation for the bathrooms, and bathrooms have water, and so, everything else has water, not the pool, this pool takes care of itself, but it involves the rest of that water flowing through.
So, the pressure tanks are for the water. And that's a necessity, so we have about six hundred things to take out of this, just because of the estimate for the replacement, I would put in it as for resale, same for software, the printer being replaced. So, I can take six hundred out of the estimate, change that amount to seventy-two hundred. Okay, we have twenty-seven hundred for computer software, that's there for sale, twelve sportsmen, the annual use point seven nine. We refinanced our, uh, purchase sales, our purchase bonds. So, you'll notice our principal payment's gone up and our interest payment's gone down. And so, total for Evans Punch now, with those little changes we made, is eight eighty-four five-ten, which is still a deficit of two hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty. which is still a deficit of 255,936.
No question. Yeah, it's small, but there's signs. The line for concession, 1200. They have 1,500 budget for this year. They haven't spent any of it. Is there something that they're planning or planning that now instead of?
I will get away that this year.
I hope they fix that sign outside.
I was going to ask about the book sign, the antique book sign that used to be across. We were discussing getting that refurbished and put back up.
You're asking for it.
So. It's not ever, I heard that's not ever going to happen.
You're not going to work.
Because the location was an issue of safety and where else would you put it if you don't put it there? People stand in the middle of the road, those raping trucks come down the road and they try to take pictures of books.
We talked about that. People stand in the middle of the road, take pictures, stay colorful, dude.
Well, I just didn't want your hopes to be up because I heard the sign was not going to happen. It's not getting refurbished.
Who told you that?
Does this sign discussion need to be held at Evans' lunch advisory committee? And I removed the 1200 from here and use the 1,500 budget in this year to get the signs?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have any ideas of how to think of that difference or do we want to take that number and go with it?
What do you say that difference was again?
Uh, we took out the entire $1,200 from signs because they have 1,500 this year. They haven't used it all.
No, I'm sorry. I was talking about.
Oh, uh, well, we just took 1,500 more out. So right now our projected loss in Evans' lunch fund is 254,760. And to just jump forward if I can real quick and show you what that impacts before we talk about it. Um, and we won't go through this budget yet, but our additional sales tax fund, our 212 fund pays the subsidies. And those amounts, uh, I haven't updated this figure yet. It's a little lower now. But those impact this budget where we currently are showing a deficit of 382,000. And this is not our general fund. So in this fund also, we're either applying cash of 382,000 or we're making some of these cuts. So I don't want to get too much into this one yet, but I wanted you to know where that money comes from and why this conversation about Evans' lunch and their required subsidies. So any other ideas, um, or do we want to move forward with that subsidy amount for lunch? Which would be the largest that either.
So if you're told, you know, for a spot, you can.
Eighty, eighty-three, thirty-two, twenty-six hundred, uh, twenty-six thousand to ten thousand. But that's there.
If they don't use all their payroll in that time though, that lowers what the subsidy has to be.
It does.
Whatever they don't.
You don't give them what they need, but right now we're budgeting for what we plan and we have to take that out now to plan for us. And I don't think we want to do that. What I hear from you is that you want to raise it. So I think that 391,600 is a fairly good estimate. If you wanted to raise it, I don't know how you're going to lower it and raise it. You got to look forward to using that subsidy amount or do we want to talk anymore about?
You have, uh, it was small again. The minor tools was still highlighted. It's a little bit higher.
Yeah, that's one where we might be able to take a little bit. Just look. We could put it at 1,500 and still be 500 over what they had last year and enough for what, if we look historically, what they spent. Maybe you have another thousand if you'd like to do that.
Yay.
We solved it.
Is there any repairs to the locker room? Not the equipment repairs for the phase three.
I don't see how we can take that home at all.
No, that, my understanding is that's a couple of those. Can you see the building?
Well, if we back to the ceiling, man, that's going to be expensive.
Can we take 9,000 off and not begin the women's locker room updates? So they see what they have in the year. I mean, that's still all they need. But if, or we can just open ahead of this mid-year, you guys decide.
I mean, if we want to take it away off the shutdown money, touch the women's locker room, we could make that suggestion. I know that Sturgis is just now redoing theirs, their quotes redoing their bathroom, $45,000.
Well, that's, that is what we're saying. In my honest opinion, I don't see stuff going down so fast that it's going to coincide with us being able to keep that in condition. I'd say, so honestly, you might as well start the project now.
But the seats have got to be replaced.
Yeah, we are having.
So we go along and go on.
So we have a new subsidy amount. We have 882,310. As total expenses. And that, yeah, that's just a lot of this. We never, 253,760 and that's where we go to the next one on the list. I don't go update that in 2022.
So the final on that floor is eight.
Eighty-two, three, ten. All right, so the next one on the list after Evans' lunch is the airport. We're back in the general fund. That's on page 16.
Seventeen.
Sixteen.
Right close.
Should we make these prices or should we?
I thought I chose, so if either.
Um, I've used pre-cordial though to fish back several times.
You can either eat some hot sauce over there. They'll get you something or I got a little jar here. Oh, I.
We have a full-time airport manager and summer help from May through August of 16. Hours projected for salaries and wages. Uh, group insurance, we did, used to have that expense with the airport manager who did use it, but the new one does. Particularly if you put that out of the city because unemployment insurance. The big reduction in 2022 is because we eliminated the second liability policy through Old Republic as it no longer needed since the city owns the fueling system. So instead of having two separate policies, uh, airkeeper liability through SGPNA and then, um, the overall general liability, we now went down once. And we did see a big reduction in insurance expenses at the airport because of that. Professional services, we pay for, um, the merchant processing at the airport fueling station. Southern Carroll's fire and air nav, super AWAS, runway light controls. And in 2021, we eliminated the $1,500 annual store irrigation, um, permit cost, so.
Fire sale.
Uh, that's how much it was last year, 5,800. I think it went up a little bit each year.
You said 15, huh?
Oh, no, 5,800. Yeah, so there's a big decrease we wanted to point out there. Building repairs, they have 3,000. Uh, looking for a front fence and terminal building lobby improvement. Some people like the old way, some people like the new way. Whether or not that's a need or a want, you can discuss. Equipment repair, they have 3,000. They run lowers, they deplace and snow pile edges.
So what are the lobby improvements?
Still have. Essentially paint, uh, the walls, paint the doors. Right now they're, they're stained wood and nasty. We can paint it, hot spray it through. Change out the seaming fan inside.
Nice.
Uh, replace the, this, this rail fence out front with.
Mollyhopper.
Yeah, with some of this, looks a little nicer.
Do they need?
Some of this got enough glue. It keeps the pickups off the grass.
They just get the bumper, the concrete bumper? So it doesn't anything in. It's just for gloves, right?
The type of fence he wants to put up is probably cheaper than gloves.
Hold on, we need three bumpers. Seriously? We got to pick one.
We'll leave it at that then. Supplies, we have.
I'd say if we, if we needed to reduce that or defer some of those, probably to.
What are you suggesting?
Yeah, if we need to drop a thousand, so we're, the, the, the terminal building does, could use a little bit of space. But that's probably the point. We can put our best foot forward and even come in.
When was the last time an agency would have done?
We got new windows last year.
We got new windows and shades.
Well, if you've already started that process, cleaning up the, make me look nicer, more presentable. We aren't trying to grow our airport. I mean, we are, I mean, it's a thousand dollars. It's a thousand dollars. But I would also like to know if you're going to have to be funded enough to, to accommodate that.
You know, I think from the inside, you know, look, John, make sure of your story here. We're really just going to be materials and see what it's all doing to the work itself.
Yeah. No, we're actually, I'm trying to talk to one as well.
Leave it at 3,000, drop it to 2,000.
I would leave it. What do you think? What's everybody else think? I mean, we, we, we are actually trying to grow our airport. When I was on airport committee, we even talked back then. That's been nine years ago. Yeah, we talked about gaining in with President. If any of you've gone in here, it is like walking into 1940, to be honest with you.
I give up the thousand equipment repairs if y'all just Google.
I think as much as the journals were up, 3,000.
No, I don't, that's why I'm, that's why I'm saying.
Because it said at 3,000, I mean, he's necessarily going to use the whole.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, is, y'all are happy with me?
I wouldn't have that much either.
Well, we just got the new load. That's the only reason I say.
Yeah, but there's always something to bring.
Yeah.
So kind of unless somebody else wants to, I'd add here like 3,000.
So we've been everything in through.
So far, um, 900 for supplies, printer, mailbox, batteries, et cetera. 40,000 for airport fuel for resale. 250 for other materials for resale. Janitorial supplies, 500. There's no shit here that we removed completely in 2021, but that's not true. We still pay the port body bill, so.
We just.
Okay, so that can go away?
Yeah, just.
You just save 500.
So we could strike 500.
They don't need any other janitorial supplies for?
Yeah, we have toilet paper, we have big stuff.
So we're only dropping 390 of it because that did come out of there. How much do I leave that at? 50 or?
Yeah, leave it.
So we didn't drop it off.
Okay, so just.
When I met with it, the port body was there.
Minor tools, the note said previously I'm going to have to use their own tools and current address none. But when you look back, we had bought some tools before. In fact, some years we bought a large amount of tools. So, uh, there's got to be some there.
There are some there.
I hope so.
There are some there, but we're just not.
There's $200 budgeted on touch this year. What kind of tools is he looking for in this $1,000?
We can get 500. We also get the 20 volt power tools. That'll happen out there.
What'd you call it? 20 volt power tools? Because I'm going to take those notes out of there. If that's okay.
We're good on like maintenance stuff like, uh, weed eaters and stuff like that. I remember for them a lot of the.
And you said 500, John.
Yeah, we did that 500.
And then encourage him to get some things this year with this budget.
I will.
He would need them. Agricultural supplies, we have 1,500. Need spray, sprayer, chemical, gas, oil and diesel. That's from Snowwell, now lowers, tractor and truck, 2,500.
Signs, 4,000.
Uh, need all required regulatory signage. I have like what? That's my question, but.
Yeah, when the, the inspection of the fuel terminal area is supposed to have the, all the correct signage around that they own the AST tank. It's supposed to got all the safety center. I don't know if that any of the.
Oh, okay.
FAA boarded that out, so.
So we're starting from scratch on that part.
So this is, um, signage.
Related to the fueling system.
System signage. That out and send this even. Fueling system signage required regulatory, right? Needed. Required regulatory fuel system signage. And 1,000 will get what you need. We have the opportunity to get good price signs for best companies. Uh, traveling conference, the annual airport conference, 800. Telephone, 2,550. Yep.
But 800 last year and they've only spent $25,000.
Yeah, we didn't have that ever a hundred ago. In October, he may, he, there's an airport piece of the annual conference he may be interested in going to. But we just got a new manager, so.
He knows about the conferences.
Telephone, 2,550. Electricity, 8,000. Propane, 4,500. Uh, water, we have a, we do the water, waste water the same way we do in all the other departments. The broader water user is billing us out at the airport. That's a new line item. I'm not sure that's the right amount. It's new.
It's just, yes.
Yeah, we went from a small dollar amount to last month we got like.
29 dollars a month, 53.
No, we get eight, seven or eight thousand gallons free. Some months we don't have to. But for this last month, it went up significantly and we're questioning it because we were getting like nine and eight dollar bills because of the part that's free of the usage and then they bill for the overage. And then we got like a hundred and 27 dollars for one month. So it's going to be that much. This isn't going to be enough. But we got to figure out the usage there.
Isn't there a wondering number else? Or one thing, one thing to check.
They actually had it before. They didn't fill us before. This part of the contract that they just.
No, and I thought it said something on there about 50 some dollars a month.
Yeah.
One thing to check into, that you have a great increase in your water usage. Let them know so they can check.
Yeah, the city does it all the time and that's why we require that they send us bills that show the usage amount. Because there's also an agreement there for the water that runs through that meter to use for fire protection. We don't pay for it, but if we don't have the usage amounts and nobody there to tell us, I don't know who's using what for what. So this is brand new.
We had 40 months there where it really wasn't occupied with a manager. And I know when I showed up out there, they weren't more regular out there washing his airplanes, so they use his water.
Well, when you're talking about the monthly usage, that's not missing something now.
Council still has to improve the contract following the water users. When you do, then there will be that monthly meter charge. I was just talking about ten thousand gallons, I believe is what it's said.
Yep.
We get free, bring everything over that and we pay the following water users rate. When you compare what the airport uses in the winter months, there's really no reason we should receive ten thousand gallons a month unless we're watering the grass out front and we have to decide how important business to have green grass out front to pay additional water usage. Normal needs should be able to be met by staying under ten thousand dollars.
We could always go with a dry grass.
Right now, under the old agreement though, there was made provision for that to charge. And they had to be there, covered it, and they start the term. So even now, under the terms of the old agreement, it's been.
We're pretty much fifty one dollars a year. That's for one.
They don't have that now.
If they're signing that, this is gonna blow up. Come on. Slightly better change.
Our current agreement is being negotiated early. It's still in a fast.
If you're.
So it's a great point. Contract is set up and not taken back until January first. So you can come into this one. Yes, there'd be sixty dollars a month water meter. So that's set up.
And so knowing that, John, unless we don't redo that agreement and play on the old one, this three hundred is not gonna be enough. If that's seven twenty plus three hundred, then we're at a thousand fifty year.
Just that thing and that.
Bye, Kerry.
I don't know how it gets over, what are you doing here?
Yeah. So do we wanna raise that to a thousand fifty? Or do we wanna leave it at three hundred to figure out what's gonna happen in the supplemental appropriations? We have to.
I would rather budget it out.
You know, cause if we sign the agreement, we're not paying.
We say that. We have a budget out too, so. So we already put a thousand fifty in there?
Direct admission, open words, just to improve the contract.
Yes.
Putting a thousand fifty in there as an estimate. Not saying that's the right number, but it's the best one I can come up with. We are all in agreement with it. It's cut to the fifty, we just have it back.
One step forward, two steps back.
Do we need to? Okay, we're back on.
Our readers get that all the time. So we can turn that to a fee. Probably have that at a thousand bucks.
All right. Back on, ready? And the next one on our list is the water department or fund?
We didn't finish this one.
We did, we get the airport?
No.
No, we're building.
We're rebuilding.
Yeah, you said.
Already negotiated that one.
We're gonna increase buildings for twenty five dollars.
You were. All right, sorry, I tried to go ahead.
I got some good news for you on this one.
Yeah, we were all the way down to water, weren't we?
We just got past water, we're on buildings now. Five thirty two.
Cell phone, we didn't talk about new in twenty twenty-one. Airport manager's smartphone, so you can monitor the camera system. Started the conversation about cell phones. Got a new phone, got it set up today. No, the phones are free, that's for the service. Um, bill, yeah, the monthly fee is no. And it's a smartphone, so that you can have the app by app to view the cameras. They can have a cell phone. Uh, we're a building, five thousand. Fueling shelter and AST improvements for FAA and D A N R.
And we talked about that during the break. Come up with a possible solution to that, we can drop that without. Looks like towards that one.
What's our solution and what are the improvements?
We're gonna extend the roof line out. Cause what's happening is our, I mean, it looks like crap now. We can make another year look like crap, but we don't need our card reader to get that. So we extend the heat out two feet. It should be dry with credit card through. Or maybe we'll be here.
Okay. Machinery, we have twelve thousand. Toro mower is last leg, but would surrender for city match of SD DOT grant. AWAS three system costs three hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna trade out twelve thousand.
That's the grant match. We talked to DOT, we can get it in twenty twenty-two anyway, in twenty twenty-three. To replace the Toro mower, you need fifty five hundred, so we can drop that one.
And we just bought a new mower.
We got the big mower. We had given it to one of the four of us. It's got the hand me down from the cemetery. The lower is two, we might be able to land there and make another.
So I lowered that to fifty five hundred and it's to replace the Toro mower?
Yep.
And I take the rest of the stuff out?
Yeah, AWAS three is, you know, when you watch the news on code of territory news and they never give hot springs information now, it's got all the other places. Cause we don't have an AWAS three. We become a national weather certified place when we have AWAS threes. We become.
You know, the other one, we get complaints in communities, you don't actually get hot springs.
Because we don't have an AWAS three. But that's the next, that's the next level. That's the next level. Once our hangers are finished, we'll be leasing from an AWAS three. That would be our experience.
Put an AWAS.
Aviation weather observation station.
All right, and the last one is computer software. That's for our Q T pod, that's our airport fueling station. That's software cost handling. So one thirty-nine, nine twenty-five is our total in airport. Are we ready to move on? One thirty-nine, nine twenty-five. Now we can go to the water fund. We're out of the general fund. This is an enterprise fund. This is on page thirty-one. You remember as we reviewed revenue, we have projected revenue for the water plant of eight hundred. Eight hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. We'll go through the projected expenses. They total eight hundred and seventy-two, one seventy-five. We have a projected profit of fourteen, six seventy-five. While that sounds great, but anybody who's been around for more than a couple of years knows the water and wastewater has big things that happen. So we need extra money in the bank. No, nothing's cheap that happens in water and wastewater.
My suggestion on water and wastewater, we don't mess with the government they got. We have no clue what's gonna happen with that highway project.
Is that extreme front city hall? Would that be part of next year's project and following year?
Well, they actually do the physical work. We won't know that until the kids are out. They could pick to start there. It's most likely to start in top of the ground.
But they'll still.
Utilities.
That's. DOT has said they don't require, they don't tell the contractor where to start and where to go at. It's up to the contractor to decide where he's gonna be. Maybe three different parts town at the same time. So until the contract's more, the contractor says, sir, so we're gonna do it.
The water sewer, that's. State isn't doing that, we did it, right?
Right, but it will be in conjunction with.
Yeah.
But is that gonna be a contract or not? Has it been decided?
Contract, contract.
All have to be done before they do. So that might have to be done next year. I'm sure you're gonna do that following year. Again, making conjunction. I know that. I hope they've done street. That's a street, but they don't like.
It's gonna be a giant hole.
Yeah.
All right. So in the water fund, we have calculated two hundred and twenty thousand of salaries and wages. Not calculated is a two dollar an hour wage increase for entry level maintenance workers. Also, we had a request to just move around a couple existing employees. Instead of sharing, to put them in the department they specialize in. And we will have three and three. Uh, we have not calculated that, but really it's not gonna have that big of an impact on either of these. We can update them, but neither water or wastewater has a deficit. It shouldn't be a problem. It's not changing pay or increasing wages. It's just reallocating when the employees are working based on preference. Payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp, group insurance, unemployment, SD PAA.
Withail?
Yeah, they saw decreases. Water and wastewater both have the reallocation professional services. They also pay merchant processing fees for utility payments, credit collection, qualified pre-sort for the monthly distribution of the utility bills. They pay the meter reader out of this fund. They pay a S D eight one one. All water testing is paid out of this and tank cleaning. So they have thirty seven thousand. Publishing, they have a hundred and seventy-five dollars. They publish the annual water report. In the vehicle repairs, we have thirty five hundred. All vehicles are another year older, more maintenance, plus one set of tires. Building repairs, we have four thousand. That's to replace the skylights and doors at Evans Farm Station and the door at Conbrook Farm Station. Equipment repairs, we have thirty five thousand. They're planning to completely overhaul the existing backhoe, including pumps, various bolts, hydraulic cylinders. And here's another one where we can deduct fifteen thousand if a new backhoe is purchased. We have both in this budget. The backhoe is on your machinery and equipment. We have forty one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That's for a new.
New one. It's actually, that would be the five year lease number. The six year lease number, you and I looked at that, it was thirty eight five. That's a five year lease.
And it would be thirty eight five, is that what we had?
We go to the six years, thirty eight five.
Oh. So what, should I change the number or not? Should I change it or not?
Sure.
Right, one six, which is what you put in there. And then you're saying there's five.
I agree. More.
Yeah, it's a five year number, six year number, and I looked at the five year number. I couldn't understand what I was doing in the letter until you and I looked at it the other day.
Okay. So the option one for the five years is thirty two eight. Is that what I should put in there? Or should I add the piece? Actually, this piece of paper that you gave me.
What's that, at the top? What's at the top?
Uh, thirty two seven sixty-four. And I would put thirty two eight. Um, but this is the department that may benefit, we're talking about purchasing it. So it should be thirty two eight. And it's a five year lease to own, estimating the interest. And if we bought it outright, it'd be two hundred and eight thousand. This one says selling price, one eighty-one, five forty-four.
Got a bunch of attachments that have come with it. If you really wanna change anything out here.
Well, we added both, so we've got, this is where we have to, we're not adding anything. We're making a decision on are we going to.
Five years.
Six year.
Six year?
Yeah.
It says the term is sixty, but the number of payments are six, but the last payment's a dollar. So I think that thirty-six, five, I don't know. So the backhoe, the paperwork you gave me on the backhoe in the water department has thirty-two seven sixty-four, which is a five year lease. And it has a purchase outright price with the second case added in of a hundred and eighty-eight ninety-four.
Okay, that's correct. That's the link.
So this is not too late, it's the one eighty-four, we'll say. So it is a five year lease to own. At five percent interest, again, that's estimated. And I would put that in principal and if it's too expensive, we didn't finance it. Or we could buy it outright for a hundred and eighty-one thousand. And then there's three thousand two hundred for some of that coin that's at Conbrook. So in the water department, I guess the conversation is, do we lease? Do we buy? Do we even need? And then we'll go back up and address the equipment repairs if we buy it, right?
Yeah. My argument for the backhoe is if you had a fire in the house and your fire truck wasn't working, you have a catastrophic failure. We have a water line worries, we don't have a backhoe operating, we are a catastrophic failure. We're at that point, we have.
I saw a lot of the other days.
So just clarification. It says annual payment thirty-eight and the next number's three point two. But we have thirty-two eight.
Oh, and I should have added the, I'm sorry, I might mess up here. It's thirty-two eight. We had looked at the seven year and that's for the six year. And that was twenty-eight, I think it was thirty-eight. So that was a typo. But I also, this thirty-two eight is not gonna be enough because there's some electrical maintenance at Conbrook that we have to add to this. What did I say that was, three thousand two hundred? So we'll add that.
We're at eighty thirty-six then.
If we decide that leasing is what we wanna do.
I know they gave you a new backhoe. They're old, they got two backhoes old when I used it around years ago.
And you can have it, I said you can have it.
It's not wrong.
No, no. That's a good operating.
So if we do that. If we lease a backhoe or buy, then John's notes say we can deduct fifteen thousand from the equipment.
Correct.
So it sounds like we all agree we need a new backhoe. How we're gonna pay for that? Is everybody comfortable pursuing a lease and adding to the city debt load? Or would you be interested in pursuing a purchase of that piece of equipment and using available fund balance?
That's the available fund balance for the price range for the water.
Correct.
What's the new cost?
Um, the bid on here is for a hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. And that's a big job inclusive is of the, all the things.
We got a big government discount on the equipment.
So we would be taking thirty thousand out of the front.
Well, it would be a little, you would totally, cause you have a little, you have thirty-four, nine twenty-five left over. So and you're, you have water funds in several different cash accounts. And the general fund, if you, and this is just the day I printed this report. You have three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. In the Bank of the West, where we set aside some of the money to pay for this, we have six hundred and sixty-one. So in the water fund, you have almost ninety dollars.
But we don't have any.
Utility projects.
Right, yeah. Utility projects.
All right. And to be honest, that's what we're gonna need.
Well, we're not doing that, we're contracting it, but.
We're paying for, we're paying overages on materials. It's not covered by the current.
Are we doing the work up at school or is that hired out too?
With that.
Well, that's supposed to be next year.
I would say do the lease this year and we discuss it again next year. We, everything, Rosie, we'll lay it off. Be a plus.
I deliver that.
I agree. I believe that's right.
So I will be moving that expense estimate into the principal and interest. But we'll go back through the rest of these. Now it would be subtracted fifteen thousand. Okay.
We took the two thousand from where from the eighteen?
From equipment repairs. And it was thirty-five four. All right, we have one thousand in street walk repairs. That's to repair the steps and sidewalk landing at Evans Farm Station. We have forty thousand for sewer slash water repairs. That's really just emergency costs and standby materials associated with water line breaks, water delivery system component failures, and it's an annual estimate if we have to overbook.
I have a sewer.
Yeah, it's the title of the object code. Uh, five hundred dollars for supplies, heavy marking paint, wash killer, clothing, twelve hundred.
Oh, wash killer. Are you out there where they got a tab?
Um, minor tools, thirty-five hundred, new chop saw, blades, valve keys, batteries, et cetera. Purification chemicals, thirteen thousand two hundred. Gas, oil, and diesel is seven thousand. They are only forty percent for my year-to-date, so that should work for us. Travel and conference, they have fifteen hundred. They have new employees as well. They need to attend classroom training for certification advances. We have telephone, five hundred. In the future, they may add a monitoring system from TenTech. We have upgrade call notification system relay for equipment outages. Electricity, large electricity user, take a lot of electricity, sixty-three thousand one hundred and fifty. Cell phone, thirteen twenty-five. Improvements other than buildings, I believe this is our third year, second or third year of purchasing four-hundred meters at a hundred-and-fifty dollars each. We'll do that. We did it in twenty-twenty-one, we'll do it in twenty-twenty-two, we'll do it in twenty-twenty-three, and then the plan, our focus to upgrade to radio read meters, and towers are expensive, and that's something we talked about in twenty-twenty-four, project for that. Machinery equipment, there, we talked about, computer software, we have four main flex net support. They have fifty percent of the utility billing software and third-hand sales software. They have debt. They have an SRF loan, um, which includes twenty-eleven Albany Avenue water main replacement, Troy Avenue water main, and six street water main replacements, the annual payment on that, and the print, or interest papers are listed. And they have transfers out, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand to one-oh-one budgeted, and then the internal utility use forgiven, that's unbudgeted, so we know what they're on the use of in here. So we now have a new total for the water fund of eight-hundred-and-fifty-one-nine-twenty-five. To the wastewater fund, it's thirty-two. Do you remember, we reduced revenue. This is an enterprise fund also, no separate accounting, different than the government fund. We have projected revenues, eight-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. We have projected expenses, five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-five-hundred. We have projected profit, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred. Again, it sounds like a lab, and if you remember, this year, stuff will come very expensive. So, we have salaries, wages of a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, calculated, two-dollar an hour wage for a two-level maintenance worker, and then the reallocation of those employees.
And before we go on to the next one, I wanted to ask you on the water fund. What's the thinking behind it? What do you think, a hundred percent water? Just going on, past practice, feeling once that there's a benefit to having that department to share?
Well, they'll share them anyway. It's just, it's for them, it adds clarity.
The new employee replaced the water person who left, but he's more focused on wastewater. And this one you're talking about, he replaced the wastewater person who left, they split it fifty-fifty, and he's more, does more work in the water department, so that's, and so they each have three. They still share, but you're not splitting the cost of everything for everybody.
Those are questions.
And also, they keep looking water for, in case where they're, you're working, and the guys getting their wastewater for.
And allowing for preference for the new employees.
I got a question. Sorry, I, I, I just asking a question. The old backhoe, they said we'd have to rebuild. I just asking what was happening to the wastewater at a backhoe, and he says, well, they're getting the old backhoe, so we're going to have to rebuild it anyway?
We've got fifty thousand out.
We've already got plenty in there. With that twenty thousand, that's, we give it up. We gotta have one backup backhoe. We got the good one, we just got, because everybody uses them all. Can't say it's the water department's, can't say it's the sewer department's, because whoever needs it, doesn't really get it.
But we do have to define where it is, how, somewhere for our asset listing for our.
Somewhere it's going to come out.
Yeah, yeah.
Even the golf course uses a backup. Whoever needs it, needs it.
All right, so, uh, one-thirty-two for wastewater. They did move, um, a high-paid, long-time employee, and so it would be a decrease, it would be a decrease for the employees. Back, we have the long-time employee for a hundred percent. All the payroll taxes, retirement, workers' compensation, group insurance, unemployment, the SDPAA, decrease for this month as well. Professional services, they pay for standard testing and engineering services. They did remove nine-hundred, but alone, computer software. And they have, they often need help addressing equipment maintenance and troubleshooting, and that's all we're at. Vehicle repairs, two thousand. Building repairs, nineteen-five. The wet well area floor being repaired. They're looking at three new garage doors, two with openers, one without. HVAC overhaul, replace office and lab.
There's no heater, air in there.
What?
There's no heater, air in there.
Oh, HVAC overhaul, replace office and lab, all goes together.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and that equals sixteen-five. They have nineteen-five, that's like, I mentioned where some other building repairs and high-speed maintenance, so. Mike, go ahead.
All the electrical that is coming up on it, all that.
We, we did the major electrical stuff, but every time we fix another component, we're getting flat out there, we go in, wire on that one. And we just did the grinder pump this week, put new wire, it made a, a real corrosive, toxic environment out there.
Tell that we walk in, we light up, so is that, that extra three, exactly what?
Now, we have equipment repairs, fifteen thousand. That's repairs and maintenance in the jet truck ceiling system, or tank replacement, or used jet truck replacement.
Yeah, we got a use route, that's something we want to talk about next year, is that.
How old is our jet truck?
I'd like to ask that question.
I, I can frontload up. I feel like it starts with a two-thousand, though, which is pretty good for some.
The tank rocks out when it's real fast, and that's the big issue with it. Seals, they've had reseal life periods, but on the seal repair, the cost.
Here we have sewers, slash water repairs, more sewer focus, thirty-five thousand, significant system component repair, replacement preventative maintenance in basic materials, valve, blocks, I think, thirty-five thousand.
One question. The work that we've done down there, how much does that address the odor issue?
Once the lead goes on the digest, we'll cut that odor down by seventy-five percent.
Is there anything else we need to be budgeting for to address a few of these issues?
Next option would be the fluorine. We'll have to test it a year before we fluorine, because we have to get permission from V A R, start that process.
Nothing in the twenty-twenty-two budget that we're looking at.
I'll, I'll have you answer it in twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Supplies, just often, office items and safety, one thousand. Clothing, twelve hundred. Janitorial supplies, eight hundred. They are doing more thorough, aggressive cleaning. Twenty-five. Twenty-five hundred in minor tools. Purification chemicals and nine thousand, twenty-two hundred for gas, oil, and diesel. Six hundred for signs. They're looking to replace dated and missing safety warning signs. Travel and conference, again, new employees, a little bit of an increase, but they will need certification and classroom training for the new employees. Telephone, thirteen hundred. Electricity, twenty-two thousand, two hundred. Propane, fifteen thousand. Cell phone, a thousand. Machinery, we have thirty-five thousand for a skid steer and sledge trailer.
Yep. That's a used skid steer for the D O T's surplus, complete weight management program.
And for computer software, they pay the other fifty percent of the utility billing software, one-third of the sales software. They have debt. Um, they have a state revolving fund alone, principal and interest payments for the year there. They also have a budgeted subsidy or transfer out to the general fund, and five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-five-hundred is the total for the wastewater fund.
My speedster, because the C B O, four, you have. He's only six, not really five. The one that's kept it very well, man, is so rusted out, I don't know.
Water's still good.
It's dark. Can you see it?
We raised the mug up, we fall the hook.
It's been used, slightly scratched.
The sledge, sledge trailer, sledge is coming out the bottom of it.
Yeah, zero, three days ago.
So we are going to, um, with the two-one-one fund, which is liberal lodging and dining, gross tax fund, uh, age twenty-seven, real quick. I do think we should get through the golf course and the pro shop before we tackle one-two, since subsidies in there. And, uh, we can talk about whether that's tonight or after we get through two-one-one, and see if Bob wants to show us the website stuff. Uh, twenty-seven. So this is our, this is the fund of many names, D C B, M R T C, L O D, Triple Penny, your name. For expenses in this fund, there's really not a lot of room, uh, because they, right, they go to the chamber. You remember our projected revenue is a hundred-and-forty thousand. Currently, our projected expenses exceed revenue by three-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. There is cash that can be applied to this fund. Now, I'm just bouncing right now, but there is cash that can be applied coming out if you don't make any cuts. Based on our revenue projection, we come up with the other current expense total of a hundred-and-twelve thousand, which is the eighty percent of the chamber. Unless you change that, you don't make any changes there. With the increase to the electricity, we have thirty thousand. We have seven-hundred-and-twenty-five for telephone, and we have building repairs of five hundred, and some group repairs needed at depot. I'm not sure if that's enough.
What was it?
Five hundred is what's budgeted. I didn't see a lot of notes on.
That, basically, twelve thousand, five hundred, so that's the five hundred dollars that's going to hail that.
Okay. So is everybody having that one standing room for changes? There's really not a lot they can change there.
I'll be dropping.
We'll just leave it that.
You can hear, you can hear the crickets.
That's secondary, isn't that?
Moving on.
Okay. Since it's eight forty-eight, um, the things we still have to cover are the golf course, which has two departments, the golf course and the pro shop. The police, A C O, and the two-one-two. All of those will be difficult. We can continue if that's what you want, or we can give Bob this ten to fifteen minutes to review the website, and then schedule a third budget here tonight. I will say Friday's not good, right, Larry? And Monday, we have council meetings, so I prefer not to do Tuesday, but Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday next week would be a great time to do this and still give us enough time. Wednesday? Sounds like Wednesday. You're going once?
Yeah, I can.
I can do Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday, if this starts.
Wednesday, you know.
Shall we start at six? How long are you?
Does anybody got a problem during our Wednesday?
Um, Deb was just mentioning.
Preservation.
Oh. So if we can start at six, I don't know that we're going to need four hours to get there. Maybe we will, I don't know.
Let's, consensus, people.
That's all I, I, you know.
Well, I, I may have to clarify. I, I'm supposed to be flying on Thursday, but I don't know if she has Wednesday before we go.
Where's your parents?
Never had a camera on Tuesday.
Who's just visiting here for City Hall, waiting to hold a bit for your council?
They could, if Tuesday works, so we could.
Starting preservation, Steve has set up existing ordinance and suggested changes. Do you think that's, I'm starting to prepare.
Um, I haven't seen the gentleman.
I would prefer to come and see that.
After a weekend, but if we can, if Tuesday works and doesn't interfere with the meetings, we'll make Tuesday work.
Tuesday?
Tuesday's fine.
Okay, we're back on.
Our readers give that a whole time. If we can give that to a fee, we'll probably have that a thousand bucks.
All right, backhoe ready, and the next one on our list is the water department or fund?
We didn't finish this one.
We did, we did, we prepared for it?
No, we're rebuilding. We're rebuilding, we're already.
Yeah, you said.
Already negotiated that one, so.
We're going to increase buildings to twenty-five thousand or something?
You were, I don't. All right, sorry, I tried to go ahead.
All right, I've got some good news for you on this one.
Yeah, we were all the way down to water, weren't we?
We just got past water, we're on buildings now, by thirty-two.
Cell phone, we didn't talk about, new in twenty-twenty-one, airport manager smartphones, who can monitor the camera system. Started the conversation about cell phones. Got a new phone, got it set up today. No, the phones are free, that's for the service. Building, yeah, the monthly, he is the, well, saying it's a smartphone, so that he can have the out-by-out to view the cameras, so he can have a go phone. We're a building, five thousand. Fueling shelter and A S T improvements per F A A and V A N R.
Yeah, we talked about that during the break, uh, come up with a possible solution, and then we'll drop that with thousands, let's say four thousand.
And what's that solution, and what are the improvements?
We're going to extend the roof line out, because what's happening is our, I mean, it looks like crap now, we can make another year look like crap, but we don't need our car reader to get wet, so we extend the heat out two feet, which will be dropped with a credit card for, or maybe a little bit.
Okay, um, machinery, we have twelve thousand. Toro mower is last led, but would surrender for city match of S D, D O T grant. A W O S three system costs three-hundred thousand dollars. We're going to trade out twelve thousand.
That's the grant match. We, we talked to D O T, we can get it twenty-twenty-two anyway, in twenty-twenty-three, to replace the Toro mower, it'd be fifty-five hundred, so we can drop that one.
And we just bought a new mower.
We got the big mower, we didn't give it to the local authorities. It's got the hand-me-down from the cemetery, but the mower is two, if I'm able to land there, you'll make it better.
So I lowered that to fifty-five hundred, and it's to replace the Toro mower.
Yep.
And I take the rest of the stuff out.
Yeah, A W O S three is, you know, when you watch the news on Code of Territory News, and they never give hot springs information, they always go to all the other places, because we don't have an A W O S three. We become a national weather certified place, and we have A W O S threes, we become.
You know, the other one, because complaints in communities, you don't actually get hot springs.
Because we don't have an A W O S three. But that's the next, that's the next level, that's the next level. Once our hangers are finished, we'll do a decent move on an A W O S three. That would be our experience.
Put an A-WAS.
Aviation weather observation station.
All right, and the last one is computer software, that's for our QT pod, that's our airport fueling station, that's software cost gambling. So one thirty-nine, nine twenty-five is our total in airport. Are you ready to move on? One thirty-nine, nine twenty-five.
Now, some water.
Now, we can go to the water fund. We're out of the general fund, this is an enterprise fund. Um, this is on page thirty-one. You remember as we reviewed revenue, we have projected revenue for the water club of eight hundred, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. We'll go through the projected expenses, they total eight hundred and seventy-two, one seventy-five, we have a projected profit of fourteen-six seventy-five. While that sounds great, but anybody that's been around for more than a couple of years knows the water and wastewater have big things that happen, so we need extra money in the bank. You know, nothing's cheap that happens in water and wastewater.
And my suggestion on water and wastewater, we help best with the government they got, we have no clue what's gonna happen with that highway project.
Is that extreme front city hall? Will that be part of next year's project or following here?
Well, they actually do the physical work, we won't know that until the kids are out. They could hit the start there. It's almost like they started top of the building.
But they'll stop.
Utility is like.
That's. The DOT has said they don't require, they don't tell the contractor where to start and where to go at. They don't tell them, not the contractor, decide where it's gonna be, maybe in three different parts of town at the same time. So until the contract's awarded, the contractor says, sir, so we're gonna do it.
That's the water sewer, that's. State isn't doing that, we did it, right?
Right, we will be in conjunction with.
But, is that gonna be a contract or nothing happened to the city?
Contract, contract.
All have to be done before they do, so that might have to be done next year. We're gonna do that following.
Yeah.
I know that. They've done street, that's the street, that's the normal.
It's gonna be a giant over.
Yeah.
All right, so in the water fund, we have calculated two hundred and twenty thousand of salaries and wages. Not calculated is a two dollar an hour wage increase for a two-level maintenance workers. Also, we had a request to just move around a couple existing employees, um, instead of sharing, to put them in the department they specialize in. And we will have three and three. Uh, we have not calculated that, but really it's not gonna have that big of an impact on either of these, we can update them, but neither water or wastewater has a deficit, it shouldn't be a problem, it's not changing pay or increasing wages, it's just reallocating where the employees are working based on preference. Payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp, group insurance, unemployment, SDPAA.
With them?
Yeah, they saw decreases, uh, water and wastewater both have the reallocation. Professional services, they also pay merchant processing fees for utility payments, credit collection, qualified pre-sort for the monthly, um, distribution of the utility bills. They pay the meter reader out of this fund, they pay SE eight-one-one, all water testing is paid out of this, um, and tank cleaning, so they have thirty-seven thousand. Public safety, they have a hundred and seventy-five dollars, they publish the annual water report. And vehicle repairs, get thirty-five hundred, all vehicles are another year older, more maintenance, plus one set of tires. Building repairs, we have four thousand, that's to replace the skylights and doors at Evans pump station and the door at Hot Springs pump station. Equipment repairs, we have thirty-five thousand. They're planning to completely overhaul the existing backhoe, including pumps, various full hydraulic cylinders. And here's another one where we can deduct fifteen thousand if a new backhoe is purchased. We have both in this budget. Uh, the backhoe is under machinery and equipment, we have forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That's for a new.
New one, it's actually, that would be the five-year lease number, the six-year lease number, you know, if that is thirty-eight-five. That's a five-year.
And it would be thirty-eight-five, is that what we had?
We go to the six years, thirty-eight-five.
Oh. So what, should I change the number or not? Should I change it or not?
Sure.
Right, one-six, which is what you put in there, and then you're saying there's five there.
Yeah, it's a five-year number, six-year number, and I looked at the five-year number.
I couldn't understand what happened to the lower, so you and I looked at it the other day.
Okay. So the option one for the five years is thirty-two-eight, is that what I should put in there? Or should I have the two? Actually, this piece of paper that you gave me.
What's it at the top? What's at the top?
Uh, thirty-two-seven-sixty-four, and I would put thirty-two-eight.
Okay.
Um, but this is the department that may benefit, we're talking about versus here, but so it should be thirty-two-eight, and it's a five-year lease to own, estimating the interest, and if we bought it outright, it'd be two hundred and eight thousand. Um, this one says selling price one-eighty-one-five-forty-four.
It's got a bunch of attachments that have covered it. If you really wanna change anything out here.
Well, we added both, so we've got, this is where we have to, we're not adding anything, we're making a decision on are we going.
We're trying to go five years.
Six year.
Six year?
Yeah.
It says the term is sixty, but the number of payments are six, but the last payment's a dollar, so I think that thirty-six, five, I don't know, I think we're wrong. So the backhoe, the paperwork you gave me on the backhoe, the water department has thirty-two-seven-sixty-four, which is the five-year lease. And it has a purchase outright price with the second page added in of a hundred and eighty-eight ninety-four.
Okay, that's correct. That's the way.
So this is not two-eighty, this will be one-hundred-and-eighty-four, we'll say. Um, so it is a five-year lease to own. That five percent interest again, that's estimated, and I would put that in principal and interest expense account if we did finance it. Uh, or we could buy it outright for a hundred and eighty-one thousand, and then there's three thousand two hundred for some electrical units at Hot Springs. So in the water department, I guess the conversation is, do we lease, do we buy, do even need? And then we'll go back up and address the equipment repairs if we buy it, right?
Yeah. My, my argument for the backhoe is, um, if you had a fire in the town and your fire truck wasn't working, it's having catastrophic failure, we had a water line worries, we don't have a backhoe operating, we haven't catastrophic, so we're, we're at that point, we have to.
I so far as the other eight, so I just know what I'm about to do.
So just clarification, it is annual payment thirty-eight and the next number's three-point-two, but we have thirty-two-eight.
Oh, and I should have added the, I'm sorry, I might mess up here. It's thirty-two-eight, we had looked at the seven-year and that's for the six-year, and that was twenty-eight, and I think it was thirty-eight, so that was a typo. But I also, this thirty-two-eight is not gonna be enough because there's some electrical maintenance at Hot Springs that we have to add to this, um, what did I say, that was three thousand two hundred, so we'll add that.
Four and eighty-three-six then.
If we decide that leasing is what we want to do.
I know they need a new backhoe. They're old, but they got two backhoes old, one I used around years ago.
And you could have it back, I said you could have it.
Well.
It's not a problem.
No, no. That's a good operating.
So if we do that, we, if we lease a backhoe or buy, then John's notes say we can deduct fifteen thousand from the equipment.
Correct.
So it sounds like we all agree we need a new backhoe. How we're gonna pay for that, is everybody comfortable pursuing a lease and adding to the city debt loan, or would you be interested in pursuing a purchase of that piece of equipment and using, um, available fund balance?
That's the available fund balance for, uh, the price of water.
Correct.
What's the new cost?
Um, the bid I'm here is for a hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, and that's a big job inclusive, it's of the, all the.
We got a big government discount on the equipment.
So we're taking a hundred and eighty thousand out of the budget?
Well, it wouldn't be a hundred and eighty totally, cause you have a little, you have thirty-four, nine twenty-five left over, so, and you're, you have water funds in several different cash accounts. And the general fund, if you, and this is just the day I printed this report, you have three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. In the bank of the West, where we set aside some of the money paid for, let's be honest, we have six hundred and sixty-one. So in the water fund, you have almost ninety dollars, that is not a fund balance.
But we don't have any.
Utility projects.
Right, yeah. Utility projects.
All right. And to be honest, that's when we're gonna need.
Well, we're not doing that, we're contracting it, but.
We're paying for it. We're paying overages on materials, it's not covered by the current.
Are we doing the work up at school, or is that higher now too?
With that, that would be.
Not supposed to be next year.
I, I would say do the lease this year and we discuss it in next year, we, everything, Rosie will lay it off. Be less again.
I agree with that.
I, I agree.
I think that's right.
So I will be moving that expense estimate into the principal and interest, um, but we'll go back through the rest of these. Now, we subtract fifteen thousand. Okay.
We took the two thousand from where from that eighteen?
From equipment repairs. And it was thirty-five for four. All right, we have one thousand in street walk repairs, that's to repair the steps and sidewalk landing at Evans pump station. We have forty thousand for sewer slash water repairs, that's really just emergency costs and standby materials associated with water line breaks, water delivery system component failures, and then to the annual estimate if we have to over, we'll have to incorporate.
Like the sewer.
Yeah, it's the title of the object code. Uh, five hundred dollars for supplies, heavy marking paint, wash killer clothing, twelve hundred.
Oh, wash killer.
Were you out there when they got it done?
Um, minor tools, thirty-five hundred, new chop saw, blades, valve keys, batteries, et cetera. Purification chemicals, thirteen thousand, two hundred. Gas oil and diesel is seven thousand. They are only forty percent of the money here today, so that should work for us. Travel and conference, they have fifteen hundred. They have new employees as well, they need to attend classroom training for certification advances. Uh, we have telephone, five hundred. In the future, they may add a monitoring system from Tementine, we have upgrade call notification system relay for equipment outages. Electricity, large electricity user, takes a lot of electricity, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty. Cell phone, thirteen twenty-five. Improvements other than buildings, I believe this is our third year, second or third year of purchasing four hundred meters at a hundred and fifty dollars each. We'll do that, we did it twenty-twenty-one, we'll do it twenty-twenty-two, we'll do it twenty-twenty-three, and then the plan, our hope is to upgrade, uh, to, uh, radio, read meters, and towers are expensive, and that's something we talked about in twenty-twenty-four after the work projects are done. Machinery equipment, we already talked about, computer software, they have core and main flex net support, they fifty percent of the utility billing software and third shift sales software. They have debt, they have an SRF loan, um, which includes twenty-eleven Albany Avenue water main replacement, Troy Avenue water main, and six street water main replacements, the annual payment on that, and the print, or interest papers are listed. And they have transfers out, uh, hundred and twenty-five thousand to one-oh-one budgeted, and then the internal utility use forgiven as unfunded, so we know what they're on these different here. So we now have a new total for the water fund of eight hundred and fifty-one, nine twenty-five. To the wastewater fund, it's thirty-three. We remember we reviewed revenue, this is an enterprise fund also, so separate accounting is different than the government fund. We have projected revenues, eight hundred and twelve thousand, ninety dollars, we have projected expenses, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred, we have projected profit, two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred. Again, it sounds like a lot, if you remember this year, that will come, very expensive. So, we have salaries, wages, and levels of thirty-two thousand, not calculated, two dollar an hour wage for two-level maintenance worker, and then the reallocation of those employees.
And before we go on to the next one, I wanted to ask you on the water fund. What's the thinking behind, um, what you did a hundred percent water, and just going on, perhaps practice, feeling once that there's a benefit to having that department to share?
Well, they'll share them anyway, it's, it's for them, it adds clarity.
The new employee replaced the water person who left, but he's more focused on wastewater, and this one you're talking about, he replaced the wastewater person who left, they split it fifty-fifty, and he's more, does more work in the water department, so that, so they each have three, they still share, but you're not splitting the cost of everything for everybody.
Those, um, questions, yeah.
And also this, this lead getting with the water certification, where they're gonna be working, and the guys getting their wastewater certification.
And allowing for preference for the new employees.
I got a question, sorry, I, I just asking a question. Field backhoe, they said we'd have to rebuild. I just asking what was happening to the wastewater at the backhoe, and he says, no, they're getting the old backhoe, so we're gonna have to rebuild it anyway?
We took the two thousand out.
We've already got plenty in there, with that twenty thousand, that's gonna get it up there. We gotta have one backup backhoe. We got the good. So everybody uses them all, you can't say it's the water department, you can't say it's the sewer department, cause whoever needs it, that's where it goes.
But we do have to define where it is, how somewhere for our asset listing for our.
Somewhere it's gonna come out.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, even the golf course uses our backup, whoever needs it, they have a street to.
All right, so, uh, one thirty-two for wastewater, they did lose, um, a high-paid, long-time employee, and so a decrease is not that we decrease anybody's wages, but we have the long-time, high-paying employee. Uh, all the payroll taxes, retirement, workers' compensation, group insurance, unemployment, the SDPAA decrease for this fund as well. Professional services, they pay for standard testing and engineering services, they did remove nine hundred to the loan, computer software, um, and they have, they often need help addressing equipment maintenance and troubleshooting, and that's all we have. Vehicle repairs, two thousand. Vehicle repairs, two thousand. Building repairs, nineteen-five. The wet well area floor needs repaired. They're looking at three new garage doors, two with openers, one without. HVAC overhaul, replace office and lab.
There's no heater, air in there.
What?
There's no heater, air in there at all.
Oh, HVAC overhaul, replace office and lab, all those together.
Yeah.
Okay. And that equals sixteen-five, they have nineteen-five, but like, I mentioned, there are some other building repairs that might be needed, so, Mike, go ahead.
All the electrical that is coming up on it, all that.
We, we did the major electrical stuff, but every time we fix another component, we're getting flat out there, we go in, wire on that one, and we just did the grinder pump this week, put new wiring in, that's real, real toxic environment out there.
Yeah, you can tell that when you walk in. So, is that, that extra three, is that the goal?
Now, we have equipment repairs, fifteen thousand. That's repairs of maintenance in the jet truck ceiling system, or tank replacement, or used jet truck replacement.
And we got the used route, that's something we wanna talk about next year, is that.
How old is our jet truck?
I don't know if I can ask that question.
I, I can probably pull it up. I feel like it starts with the two thousand though, which is pretty good for some.
The tank, the tank rocks out on it, real fine, so that's the big issue when they, it's seals, they've had resealed last year, it's, I don't know, the seal repair, the cost.
Here we have sewers slash water repairs, more sewer focus, thirty-five thousand. Significant system component repair, replacement preventative maintenance in basic materials now, blocks, I think, thirty-five thousand.
Excuse me, one question. The work that we've done down there, how much does that address the odor issue?
Once the lid goes on the digest, we'll cut that odor and air up by seventy-five.
Is there anything else we need to be budgeting for to address these issues?
The next option would be the fluorid.
We'll have to test it a year before we put chlorid, we have to get permission from V A R to start that process.
That's in the twenty-twenty-two budget that we're gonna be looking at.
I'll, I'll have you answer it, twenty-twenty-two.
Supplies, just often, office items and safety, one thousand. Clothing, twelve hundred. Janitorial supplies, eight hundred. They are doing more thorough, aggressive cleaning. Twenty-five, twenty-five hundred in minor tools. Purification chemicals of nine thousand, twenty-two hundred for gas, oil, and diesel. Six hundred for signs, they're looking to replace faded and missing safety warning signs. Travel and conference, again, new employees, a little bit of an increase, but they will need certification and classroom training for the employees. Telephone, thirteen hundred. Electricity, twenty-two thousand, two hundred. Propage, fifteen thousand. Cell phone, a thousand. Machinery, we have thirty-five thousand for skid steer and sledge trailer.
Yep. That's a used skid steer for the D O T's surplus, complete weight management program.
And for computer software, they pay the other fifty percent of the utility billing software, one-third of supply sales software. They have debt, they have a state rolling fund alone, principal and interest payments for the year there. They also have a budgeted subsidy or transfer out to the general fund, and five hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred is the total for wastewater fund.
My screen's dirty, it's a studio. Forty, never. We're only six, we're at five and two. The moment's kept him right on that, he's so rested out all the time.
The water's still good.
It's dark. We raise the mug up, it falls over somewhere.
It's been used, slightly scratched.
Sledge, sledge trailer, sledge is coming out.
Yeah, I was there three days ago.
So, we're going to give the two-one-one fund, which is liberalizing and binding gross tax fund, H twenty-seven, real quick. I do think we should get through the golf course and the pro shop before we tackle one-two, since the facilities in there, and we can talk about whether that's tonight or another time. After we get through two-one-one, if Bob wants to show us the website, so.
Eight percent use.
Uh, twenty-seven. So, this is our, this is the fund of many names, C T B, M R T C, L O V, Triple D E, your name. For expenses in this fund, there's really not a lot of room, because eighty percent of the money goes into the chamber. You remember, our projected revenue is a hundred and forty thousand. Currently, our projected expenses exceed revenue by three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. There is cash that can be applied to this fund. I don't have that balance right now, I mean, there is cash that can be applied coming out, and you don't make any cuts. Based on our revenue projection, we come up with the other current expense total of a hundred and twelve thousand, which is the eighty percent of the chamber. Unless you change that, you don't make any changes there. With the increase to the electricity, we have thirty thousand. We have seven hundred and twenty-five for telephone, and we have building repairs of five hundred, it says room repairs needed at depot, I'm sure if that's enough?
What was it?
Five hundred is what's budgeted. I didn't see a lot of notes on.
At least will be twelve thousand, five hundred, so that's the five hundred dollars that we're gonna pay on that.
Okay. So, is everybody copying that one, standing room for changes, there's really not a lot they can change there?
I'll get your drop.
Just letting you back.
You can hear, you can hear the crickets.
That's a second, we will not. Since it's eight forty-eight, the things we still have to cover are the golf course, which has two requirements, the golf course and the pro shop, the police, A C O, and the two-one-two. All of those will be difficult. We can continue if that's what you want, or we can give Bob this ten to fifteen minutes to review the website, and then schedule a third budget here tonight. I will say, Friday's not good, right Larry? And Monday, we have council meetings, but we're not to do Tuesday, but Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday next week would be a great time to do this and still give us enough time. Wednesday? Sounds like Wednesday, you going once?
Yeah, I can.
I can do Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday, the story.
Wednesday, you know.
Shall we start at six? How long are you?
That's, does anybody got a problem doing that on Wednesday?
Deb was just mentioning.
Preservation.
Oh.
So, if we could start at six, I don't know that we're gonna need four hours to get there, maybe we will, I don't know.
That's consensus, people.
That's all that night, John.
Well, I, I may have to clarify, I'm supposed to be flying on interstate, but I don't remember what she does, I just think.
It's not. Never out of camera, Tuesday is not.
He's just visiting, you're sitting all the way in a little bit, we're gonna have to have a council.
They could, if Tuesday works, so we could.
Starting preservation, Steve has set up existing ordinance and suggested changes. Do you think that's my subject of concern?
I haven't seen a, a jet like that.
I would prefer to come and see that once, five minutes, a couple more hours. She should do some.
After a Monday, but if we can, if Tuesday works and doesn't interfere with the meetings, we'll make Tuesday work.
Tuesday?
Tuesday's fine.